Okay, welcome everybody. Today is a very special day. It is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. And this is the last official meeting for George Newman, who is still a Commissioner, but he won't be for long. So in our room here, we have myself and Commissioners Kelly McNicholas Curry, Patty Clapper, George Newman, and then our Commissioner-elect Francie Jacober, as well as Terry Anderson running the IT. So this is our chance. It officially says E-Team farewell for George Newman. I think this is perhaps more a roasting George Newman event. I'm not sure. So I have to lay out some ground rules for this. We're going to treat this like a public hearing. Comments will be strictly limited to three minutes per person, and we request that nobody repeats anything that anybody previously has already said in the interest of saving time. So for instance, if someone says, "George Newman is great," or "I really enjoyed working with George Newman," or something like that, you are not allowed to repeat that because it would go against the rules of the Board of County Commissioners. And the reason we are following these rules is because these are the rules that George went by the entire 12 years he was on the Board. So I ask you all to respect this. And John Peacock, do you have your timer ready to keep track? Make sure nobody goes over three minutes?
I do not have my timer ready, to be honest with you, Steve. I think we should irritate George during his last meeting.
So I am going to start this off. I was just looking at a picture last night of eight years ago at the swearing-in on the courthouse steps when I was first sworn in as a Commissioner. And I had my sport coat on and a tie on, and I was standing next to George Newman and Mike Owlesley. They both looked like they were just here for a regular work session day or something, you know, with, I don't know, blue jeans and just a regular shirt, nothing fancy. But then I started thinking, the three of us standing there eight years ago had a grand total of 12 years as county commissioners. Mike Owlesley had eight years, and George had four years at that time, and I had zero years. So our sum total of all of our experience as commissioners of three people was 12 years. Now today, George himself has 12 years of experience that the three people had eight years ago. Therefore, I think it's going to take the work of three people to replace George here on this board.
Oh, you're in for it.
So Francie, you have big shoes to fill. I'm going to open this up to other people to make whatever comments they wish, and I'm not going to strictly hold you to the three minutes unless George insists on it. So we're going to do a hand raising, and Patty, you raised your hand.
I'm ready. Because I don't want, I have too much to say that I have to say at all. I don't want people to say I'm repeating. So this is to George Newman from Patty Clapper. I was on the Board of County Commissioners when George was first elected in 2008. He was the new Commissioner, and I was the older Commissioner. And when I returned to the BOCC in 2014, he was still, he was the older still-in-office Commissioner, and I was the new back-in-office Commissioner. So over the years, George and I have served together on the BOCC for eight out of his 12 years in office. Therefore, George and I have a great deal of BOCC history, and it is my history with George that I will truly miss, but something I will never forget. George and I have not always been on the same page on issues, but if anything, we have always been openly willing to listen to each other. Our differences have always generated further discussion, oftentimes leading to mutually agreed-upon decisions, decisions made in the best interest of all involved parties. And while George and I may not always agree, regardless of who won or lost the argument, we never held a grudge. We got over it, and we moved on. We have always respected each other's positions, commitments, and passions, sometimes to the point of humor. And on that point, the humor that George has always brought to the BOCC table, at least for me, is his body language, his facial expressions. And Zoom meetings have only furthered this. When he scratches his head, it means to me that he is deep-thinking, pondering the issues. When he puts his head in his hands, it's more often than not in an effort to overcome his growing frustration with the situation at hand. But when it comes to his facial expressions, what can I say, as his facial expressions have always said it all? Problem for me is that I've never been able to not respond to George's facial expressions. The smiles that border on flat-out smirks. That has caused me to smile even more to smirk myself. If anything, I wished I had saved photos of George's body language, facial expressions, on my phone. So in the future, without George being on the Board, when I find the need for a little George humor, I would be able to pull up a George photo on my phone to get me through the meeting with a smile, if not a smirk, on my face. In closing, I have one bit of advice for George. So George, if you need to supplement your retirement income, you should not do this by playing poker, because you need to have a poker face to win at poker. And if anyone I've ever known who does not have a poker face, it's you, my friend. So thank you, George, for all your service, and you will be duly missed. Thank you, Steve. I also gave George a pencil with a red bow, because you know how George is always flicking his pencil? I gave him a Picking County pencil with a red bow on it.
So we're going to take, people just raise your hands, and I will call you as I see you. So Greg, you go next.
Sure. Well, I thank you. I wanted to say ditto on everything Patty said, and in the interest of brevity, but I can't. I've got to add a couple more things. I was grasping, because this morning, I wasn't prepared for this, quite honestly. I wasn't ready to think about George abandoning us right when we needed most.
Abandoning.
But I did find some quotes that I really appreciate and thought could apply here, and these are from Benjamin Disraeli, somebody who I love quoting. And let me see what I can find here. "The greatest good you can do for another is not just to share your riches, but to reveal to him his own." And I think as a mentor coming onto this Board, and having George and the rest of our Board, quite honestly, to guide me when I first came on, was so valuable. And it's not that George was eagerly willing to shepherd me through, but I was still able to glean something from him by looking at the facial expressions and having these conversations. I really appreciate it. George has helped me grow as a Commissioner and as a human being, so I'm very grateful for that. And let me see what I have. There's another one here, too, that I really liked. "Life is too short to be little. Man is never so manly as when he feels deeply, acts boldly, and expresses himself with frankness and with fervor." This was written by Disraeli in the 1850s or 60s, so it's always gender-specific, but it shouldn't be. But George has always said what he thought, and I really appreciate that, even when it might have not been the popular sentiment, or maybe it came off. And I've certainly learned a lot from him regarding that, is to speak your piece and be okay with it, and he's demonstrated that to me. The last quote really has nothing to do with George, but it's a quote that I've just been dying to share, you know, with him, and it's the conversation, of course, that's so famous. A member of Parliament said to Disraeli once, "Sir, you will either die on the gallows or of some unspeakable disease." And I don't know if George would ever have this conversation with me or anyone else, but the response was, of course, that, sir, would depend on whether I embraced your principles or your mistress. And, you know, I've been looking for an opportunity to share that sentiment with George for four years now, and it never had the chance until today. So thank you all for indulging me. And good luck, George, on wherever you go and whatever you do next. He's waving goodbye as the mic finally. Brevity is the soul of wit, right?
Kelly had her hand up first. Let's do the Commissioners, and then we'll get Joey up there.
Well, George, you know, when I first came on the Board-- You know, when I first came on the Board two years ago, I thought, you know, I really want to build a good, close working rapport with everybody on the Board. And that George Newman, he is a discerning fellow, so this is going to be a hard nut to crack. So it's been a pleasure for me and a little, I guess, feather in my cap every time I've gotten either an eyebrow raise or a chuckle out of George. And so I'll hold on to those, and I'll miss you dearly on the Board. But I want to thank you, because, you know, as a new Commissioner, you really inspired me to find my voice, to be forthright, and I watched you just speak your values, defend them clearly and without, you know, apology, and that's inspired me to do the same, and that has been probably one of the more valuable lessons I've learned over the last two years. So thank you. I'm going to miss you, and I hope you don't mind if I try to get a chuckle or eyebrow raise out of you once in a while. And I will say, I just want to show a picture of my cake that I made here for George, because it does celebrate him. You know, it's chocolate, and I'm sorry we can't all share it in COVID days, but George deserves his own cake anyway. So it's chocolate, sort of reflecting the everyman and the representation of Picking County that George is. It's woodsy, because that's where we know we'll always find George. And there's some salted caramel, because we know George is a bit salty, too.
Kelly, are those psychedelic mushrooms on there?
They're not. And I think the public needs to know, the only way we could get George back into this meeting room is if Kelly baked him a cake. So we got him here.
So Joey DeSalvo is coming up to the mic, and he's going to be speaking on Kelly's, from Kelly's seat right now. Joey, go ahead.
Thank you, Steve. George, I had little time, if none, to prepare, so this is right from my heart and my memory. Ten years ago, when I decided to run for office, George made the same decision at the same time. And we went, I had no idea what running for office meant and the things you'd have to do to get elected. Well, in Redstone, they invited me to a dunk tank, and George Newman, who was on the campaign trail, was in the same dunk tank. And George and I on Redstone Boulevard, in our board shorts and T-shirts, would take turns climbing into this dunk tank to get abused, and I hardly knew George, but he was a reluctant but enthusiastic participant, I would say, more reluctant. And I said, "I'm going to really get along with this guy, because we both make bad decisions." And accepting this invitation was one of them. So I think George and I somewhat bonded over that micro-experience on Redstone Boulevard one day, and I looked feverishly for my photographs of them, and I couldn't find it. But George, I'm going to get it. So basically, you have the goods on me, and I've got nothing on you. So after that, when George and I started working together, that's when I learned about the man. And I have to tell you, I really appreciated George's incredible honesty and candor when he came to me with a problem that was usually brought to him by one of his constituents. And each time he did, it was with passion, but well-thought-out passion. And I appreciate George for your honesty and your integrity to Picking County, and I, too, have seen a lot of the same looks that Patty has. I don't think I'm going to miss them when you go like, when you're scratching your head and then just glance down, and I go, "George is not on board with this." So I knew who to direct my comments to, but it has been an honor and a privilege, and I'm going to miss you. But thank you for your service to Picking County.
Thanks, Joey. I've got to say, when we were up in Redstone, that was the funniest thing. I was just cracking up when I was dunking Joey, or Joey would dunk me. We were just laughing hilariously. It was the funniest thing I think I've ever done.
So there's my, thank you, namaste, my friend.
Thank you. Okay, Nan, you're next.
Hi, everybody. Nan Sundin, Human Services. A couple of things that have not been said, I'm trying not to repeat. George was the Director of Leader to Aspen in 1994, when I participated. And so when he became a Commissioner, I was pretty sure that he was going to know that I don't know anything I'm talking about. But to me, in another way, I was nervous about having him be on the Board of County Commissioners. But he immediately just reinforced my impression of him, which was, you know, just his thoughtfulness, his attention to detail, his kindness to staff repeatedly. With that said, I know that my team will miss George, but we also, when we do agenda item summaries, we look through it with a fine-tooth comb, because what we say on our team is, "If something is missing, George will find it." And so does Steve, but George, too. You know, we just really appreciate that, George, that you didn't always agree with our recommendations, and you asked thoughtful questions to help us be better at our work. And so we will miss your participation, and I think since 1994, you and I have known each other a long time, and, you know, you are a mentor to me in terms of leadership. And so I thank you for that.
Yeah, that was nice.
Thank you, Nan. Let's go to Bill Sterling, and then Mona.
And Gary Tenenbaum has his hand up, too.
You're muted. We always have to say that at least once a day, Bill.
Am I back? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. It's very rare that you get Bill Sterling muted.
Reine me in, Steve, if you have to. How I got to know George was on the CORE Board, the Community Office of Resource Efficiency. Patty had been on that Board as a representative from the county earlier, before George, and George was, well, he was the Chair of that group for almost a decade. And so I was able to experience his leadership skills in running meetings and engaging people, challenging people, and keeping things moving along. And he was always on time, which, of course, got my attention, having a lifelong struggle with that. He was there in the mid-range of all the RAMP programs, when all the grants were being given, and when CORE really took off and its goal to reduce the Valley's carbon footprint. And it's a very diverse Board, and so, you know, it has a lot of strong personalities on it. And also, he's in the forest all the time. I used to see him, when I'd be hiking with my partner Barbara, we'd run into him. But this past summer, for the first time, he and I got to hike together. And of course, he's a young man, so he's got a fierce pace, and it's all I can do to keep him in view. But he's a tall guy, so I can see him on the road ahead, and so-- [singing] There's a long, long trail winding into the land of your dreams, and the cotton tails are singing, and the night moonbeams. There's a long, long night of waiting until our dreams all come true, and George will be going down that long, long road ahead. George, enjoy your time off coming up. Build some cabins. Have a great time.
That was great.
Bill, now I know why you always wanted to stand next to me, so you could carry a tune a little better. Okay.
I can't read music. I'm a memorizer, so standing next to Steve, who can read music, was always very beneficial to the CORE Society.
Okay, Mona.
Well, thank you for including me, and it's good that I'm following Bill, but I can't repeat some of the things Bill said, so I'll say some other things instead. I do have to say thank you, and I'm probably going to get a little emotional, because I feel really fortunate and honored to work with George for eight years. You are kind, and your dedication and passion to preserving and protecting the climate has been stellar and unwavering. And not only your leadership on the CORE Board, but for Picking County and what you've been able to do, is really, I mean, all of the county commissioners, but George, as a CORE Board member, you've always been there, and you've always been thinking about what CORE can be doing and how can we be better. And two of your favorite questions that will always remain in my mind and are on my whiteboard is, "How do we win, and where do we play?" And those of you who've sat in CORE Board meetings have heard him ask those questions over and over. And so I think that, I'll ask you that question now. How will you win, and where are you going to play next? Because I think there's some great opportunities for you. I remember the first time I met George was at a county Commissioner meeting, and I was new to the position, so, and I'd been with CORE for eight years. It was the summer when I came on, and I walked into the Picking County Commissioner's old room, your little hot room, and it was a warm day in Aspen, and I was there to make a presentation with Cindy, and all I could do was think, "This county Commissioner is sitting here in shorts and sandals." I was so impressed. I thought, "This is the place for me. I'm happy to be in the Valley." And George, I thank you for welcoming me and for your support again, and it's just been an honor. And I'm looking forward to going on walks with you or getting out on those trails and enjoying some of these sites around Picking County that you've helped preserve and others have helped preserve. And that little scratch of the head, it took me a while to pick up on that, but after a few years, I finally did. It was like, okay, we figured something out. So thank you for all of your time that you've given us as a county Commissioner and as Chair of the CORE Board, because now I'm cutting my teeth with Bill Sterling, so we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Let's see. Gary Tenenbaum, did you have your hand up earlier?
I did.
Okay, Gary, go ahead.
I'll be quick. I'm Gary Tenenbaum, Open Space and Trails. And George, from the first day I met you, I love the fact you were no BS. I come from New York. I don't like BS. We had a county Commissioner before that, Dorothea, no BS. And now I think we got Francie, no BS. So it's the no BS district. And honestly, that has been, you know, really refreshing, because you've been such a good supporter of staff, especially when we go to, you know, caucus meetings, and you're there, and you're protecting staff, because you would always stand up and be able to just say, "Hey, direct it at the Board of County Commissioners. We're the ones who make decisions, not staff. We direct staff." And I really appreciated that. And, you know, through the 12 years you've been here, I've been here, too, and, you know, what you have done for this area is monumental. You've been on the Board during the biggest acquisition phase of the Open Space and Trails program. You're going to leave behind a legacy of, you know, Picking County as just a conservation legacy of Sky Mountain Park, Glacier, Emma. You know, all these places are protected. You were part of it, and you were the big cheerleader to make that happen, and so I really appreciated that. You're one of the few Commissioners, I really always knew what you were going to say in meetings. You know, yes, you did that little scratch of your head, and I usually meant that as, "Okay, I'm getting tired of the BS, and we're going to have a really good statement, and I'm going to bring it back." So George, thank you. I'm going to miss you. You do lose your immunity for tickets, so be careful out there. And, you know, from all the Open Space staff, we really, all of us, we talked about it, and we really will miss you. And, you know, we love the fact that we'll still see you, because you're always there. But, you know, thank you.
We're going to go to Cindy next, then Dan Blankenship, and then Brian Pettit, in that order.
I'm so excited no one said what I wanted to say yet, which is that, George, what I really have appreciated about you throughout all these years, there are many things, but the one thing that I really appreciate is that you have the ability to back up and really look at how everything fits together. And that is such a skill in our day-to-day, to be able to see how one part fits with another, and how whatever you do in one area is going to affect another area. And that has always been something that has made a huge difference in my life as the Community Development Director. And a big difference, I think, to the Boards that you've worked with, you've been able to provide that overview and a barometer or a compass to what the values are, and do that with compassion and with, as Gary said, no BS. And I've always appreciated that. So thank you so much, George, and I hope to see you out there.
Thanks, Cindy. And roll tide, roll.
Roll tide. I've got a mic.
Wait, she--
So who is that? Where did you grow up, Cindy? I forgot.
You forget? Roll tide, Alabama.
Okay.
George texted me la-- I am embarrassed to say, but I'm actually, I love the fact that Alabama's always winning, but I'm really not that big of a football fan, and George texted me last night and said, "Roll tide." And I went, "Oh, my gosh, I should turn on the TV."
Okay, we're going to change gears here and get on wheels and start going to raft the people. Dan Blankenship.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I started working at the Long Ford Transit Agency in 1989, and at that time, Spence Vidion was on the raft of Board of Directors. And I can't remember exactly why, but he sent me over to meet with George at the old-- And I can't remember exactly why, but he sent me over to meet with George at the old Chamber Office, which was on Main Street and, I think, Aspen at the time. George had a little office kind of in the back there. And again, I don't remember much about why I was there. I just remember George and came away with the impression that this guy really has strong opinions about things. And I wasn't quite sure whether or not I really liked him at the time. And I'd have to say that George is an acquired taste for me, and he has really gotten a lot better with age. With 31 years of knowing him, and especially with the 12 years that he spent on the Rafta Board of Directors, eight as an alternate, in which he attended just about every meeting as an alternate. I think Michael Allison was the regular board member, and maybe Dorothea was before Michael. But, you know, it took a lot of dedication for him to attend those meetings, but he was passionate and truly interested in what was going on at Rafta, even though he might not have had an official vote at the meetings. He was never shy about expressing his opinions. And then he became the Chair of Rafta, I believe, in 2017. And that was during the run-up to our Decimation 2040 campaign and our ballot question seven day election in November of 2018. And he really took the lead in that, and he called how much we should go for in terms of a no levy, you know, way before everybody else. He said, "We can't really go much above 2.6," and we ended up going at 2.65. And we won by a total of 501 votes district-wide. Had we gone for any more, chances are, we would have lost that election. But George took it upon himself, take a resolution of support of that ballot measure around to every jurisdiction, and made sure that everybody, even jurisdictions that were kind of on the fence, signed on to it. And he attended countless meetings on the Campaign Committee, Rafta Board meetings, you know, public outreach meetings. And without his leadership, I can confidently say, we probably would not have been successful in passing that ballot measure. And it means so much to Rafta and the region, not only now during COVID-19, but into the future, because it gives us the tools to do some great things for the communities that we serve, our passengers, the environment. And he deserves a tremendous vote of credit and a debt of gratitude. You know, we have a huge debt of gratitude to him for his efforts on behalf. What I like about George is that you can disagree with him and passionately disagree with him, but he doesn't hold a grudge. He doesn't get his ego bruised. He's willing to listen. He's a person that is very self-confident and self-assured. And as I've gotten knowing better over the years, I really appreciate him. And I am going to miss you tremendously on the Rafta Board of Directors, and I wish you success. You're a user of the trail. You're a user of our service. And I hope to be able to see you periodically, but your leadership is going to be sorely missed on the Rafta Board as well as at the Board of County Commissioners. So, thank you on behalf of Rafta and personally, on behalf of myself for all that you did for us.
Yeah, and if you didn't realize that George was the county representative at the Intermountain Transportation Planning Region, and most of our meetings were held in Eagle. So, George and I would have a lot of conversations going there, like, "What are the rules? What are we gonna be dealing with?" And then also about our families. "How's your kid? How's your wife?" That kind of thing. So, we got to know each other very well. But I will tell you that between Glenwood Springs and Aspen, there have been many millions of dollars of improvements that George Newman's name is on. If you walk under Highway 82, you're likely walking under a tunnel that George fought for and got funding for. So, and I'll tell you, one of the reasons I feel that he's so powerful in advocating for Picken County's needs is because he has this ability to reconcile his thoughts with his heart in a second. And if those reconciled correctly for George, he's a powerful speaker, and he cuts to the chase, and it's no BS, and people listen. So, with that soft voice that George has, when he would speak, the room would go quiet, and they would hear what he had to say, because what he had to say was valid and powerful. "George, I'm gonna miss all those rides to Eagle with you." And the other thing that George could do was he could shift gears. So, there would be this, you know, he would have this eloquent speech and tooth and nail and fighting for funding, and then he would turn to me and go, "So, how's your son these days?" And that's a skill too, George, just always be in balance. And I always will admire you, and I was always proud of sitting next to you in all of those public meetings. Thank you very much. I too will miss you.
Okay, the floor is open. If someone wants to speak, Paul Tadun.
Paul Tadun. How are you doing, everybody? I'm happy to be here.
Part of this agreement. I would just like to say that I'm proud, George, to have worked with you as the lawyer for Rafta for the many years that you've been on the board. It's really a treat for those that might not have seen Rafta in operation to see someone skillfully deal with the issues in Picken County and then deal with the people who represent Garfield County. So, it's really remarkable when you can get two ends of the valley that are very diverse that can work together the way that they do on Rafta. And it's really a pleasure. Some of the things that impressed me about you, George, is, you know, I try to prepare for the Rafta Board meetings, but, you know, I would go to those meetings, and I think sometimes you were much better prepared than I was. You knew the schedules, when the buses would arrive, who were on the buses. You were also instrumental in the Maroon Bills project that has turned out to be a success. And I want to diddle with, you know, what Dan was saying. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and Rafta is a much better regional organization, working as government should, and you played a major role in that. So, I thank you for that, but I just want to tell you how impressed I am with your leadership abilities during the years that we've worked together.
Brian Paul, Dan Crystal.
Thank you very much. I'm kind of a meeting crasher. I'm not part of the union, but Cindy asked if I could join in and be a part of this. And I didn't want to not say goodbye to George because he's been instrumental in a lot of the programs and a lot of the adoptions that have gone through as a building official. The last place we wanted to be is in front of the board, but in those times I've had to be there, it's been a very good experience. I wish I would have known about the tells earlier because maybe I wouldn't have struggled so much trying to get some of those critical things out in front of the board. But I learned over time that George was gonna be the one asking the tough questions, and I'd start trying to predict, "What is George gonna ask when we get into that meeting and get on the agenda?" And then I even learned later on with our relationship to talk to you beforehand and find out what you were gonna ask in the meeting, because it was important to know what George's questions are gonna be, because they were gonna go straight to the point of the matter and to the heart of the matter. So, I really appreciate working with you and the time we spent together, and gonna miss you.
Now I have to tell all of you a story about my relationship with Crystal. Crystal's mom, Marilyn Lee, was in my class of 1966 at Passault High School. And so, I knew Crystal's mom way before she was even a figure of anyone's imagination. And her dad, Henry Lee, was kind of like the Fonz. He was this guy who was into fixing, you know, like drag racing and fixing cars. He came from Clifton, I think, and he was hanging around Passault, being sort of a mechanic kind of a guy. And that's who Marilyn fell in love with and married. And Crystal, we have Crystal to thank them for. So, Crystal, go ahead.
And just to add to that, Henry Lee then worked for Rafta for 28 years and under Dan Blankenship. And then my, I was in the first class at Wildwood School, and my all-time hero of the world was Molly Child because she had red hair and freckles. And as a little girl with red hair and freckles, she was like my idol and my favorite teacher. So, that's my Steve Child story. Let's see. I met, I first knew of George in 1992, I think, first, but I got to know him better through the Aspen Institute Transportation and Mobility Task Force. And I too was always impressed with George's use of public transportation. I loved that he was always taking the bus, and he never seemed to hesitate to say what needed to be said, which always moved the dialogue where it needed to go and moved it forward. So, I was always really grateful for his participation in those sessions. I got to know him and his lovely wife Liz a little better because they would attend our Aspen Institute Holiday Party. Those were really fun, and I look forward to when we can do those again. And also, his loyal attendance at the corn boil in the upper frying pan. That was really great seeing George at those events, which are really important. So, and maybe we'll have to have a dunk tank at those upcoming events, Cindy. Boy, we could make a lot of money, I'm thinking, on those. Thank you, George, for your leadership and for all that you've done for our community, especially some of the more forgotten little nooks and crannies of the county. Thanks for your leadership, and we look forward to continue working with you. We'll rope you into some volunteering opportunities with you, I think. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. Who's gonna be next?
John Bennett.
John Bennett? Did you have your hand up? John Ely. John Ely, go ahead.
I'm trying to think of what to say, and I'll tell you what, I don't know how I'm gonna get through these meetings. They're gonna go on forever now. They're just gonna go. I don't know. I don't know how anybody else is gonna get your focus and get your attention like you had. I'm not sure how anybody can articulate a goal as clearly and keep your eye on how to get to that goal. I hope that you rubbed off on all of us over the last 12 years. I really appreciate working with you over the 12 years. We've had a lot of hits, a couple of misses, but I think when you think back on it, boy, we've got a lot of work done in 12 years. It's pretty impressive. I don't think we could have done it without you. Your particular insight was essential on so many discussions, on so many executive sessions, and on so many retreats, that it's really gonna be hard to keep going on some of these things without that kind of drive. So, I just want to say, I really appreciate working with you, and well, we'll see you around in the neighborhood.
That's right, in the neighborhood.
So, you'll probably have to get on a pair of cross-country skis or get on a bicycle to see George around the neighborhood.
I think John Bennett was next.
John Bennett. Putting on our wings now.
Hi, George. First of all, Steve, can you hear me okay?
Yes, John, we can.
Okay, great, good. It's been coming in and out here, and I, maybe I should mention, the not great internet service here on East Opers Creek. Someone in the county ought to look into that. So, George, I guess I got to know George 30 years ago, maybe exactly about 30 years ago. I haven't quite forgiven you for this, George. You were running Leadership Aspen, was its name back then. I think that might have been its second class that I was in. And George had us out up and down the valley doing crazy exercises. I remember, I don't know what Roaring Fork Leadership does today, but back then, we were lining up and blindfolding 25 people in the middle of a meadow way up the Crystal River and having us organize ourselves, blindfolded, with everyone talking at once. It was a marvelous exercise. And I remember him, or them, him and them, doing, leading us in another exercise where we were astronauts on the moon with only a pistol and an oxygen tank, and we were supposed to do something about that. I never quite got that exercise, but it had an effect on me. And what Leadership Aspen did do was introduce me, I'd lived in the valley a long time already by then, but it introduced me to the valley in a more profound and deep way than I had ever imagined. And I also learned a whole lot about myself and about what leadership was about. And what I blame you for is that if I hadn't done that, I'm almost certain I would not have run for mayor the very next year. Cindy Hugman, you get some blame too, because you were doing the Aspen Area Community Plan right around then, and both of those kind of sucked me in. So, yeah, I think of you both from time to time. But George, you have been, so many people have said it, and I gotta repeat it all, but you are, you are, you know, the calm, often, often, always, nearly always, you know, a very calm, sensible, kind of enlightened voice at political hearings, and that is a wonderful, wonderful thing that is all too rare in this modern world. And so much has already been said, so I'll leave it at that, but we, many of us out here really do appreciate your thoughtfulness and your reason. And lastly, just to comment, you're gonna have a lot of free time now, and I was in a public meeting in Glenwood Springs just a couple of days ago, and one of the Garfield County Commissioners took me aside, and they were interested in whether you might just become a special ambassador from Picken County to the Garfield County Commissioners. George referred to you as old Stonewall Newman. We're talking about maybe even bringing back a dunk tank, so it's all something to think about. You don't have to be bored in the future, George.
Stonewall Newman, I'll make that.
Okay, we are running out of warm bodies on here. Rich, you're next.
Great, thank you, Steve. It's ironic, George, my two things that really come to mind were, one of the first times I had the chance to get in front of the Board of Commissioners, and now, one of the last with you being on the board. But I remember John Peacock and John Ely had been working on a housing program for a while, and I remember Peacock had told me, "Yeah, just, all we gotta do is just get it over the finish line." And I remember going to the board work session, you and Rachel Richards at the time, very articulate, knowledgeable about housing. And this was whenever we were gonna talk about our DEET restricted program. And, you know, George, I can't thank you enough because I recall John saying, "We're gonna ask him for $2 million to kick this program off." And coming from Mesa County, Grand Junction area, $2 million was just unheard of, that would do anything to support employees. And I don't say that negatively, it's just a fact. And it was one of my first opportunities to really see yourself and the board, and this board that's currently seated showed that support for the employees. And after we finished that up, it was one of the tougher work sessions, I believe I've been through, you taught me, that I better be prepared, as mentioned here. But we were able to get that through, and I think that's one of your legacies, George, is this DEET restricted program's unique. The employees have taken advantage of it, so with that, we're very appreciative. And then the last one is the airport. You had been on the airport project for years, and I think it was very appropriate that the seated board allowed you to make that motion to approve the Common Ground Recommendation from a great effort that was done. from a great effort that was done throughout the citizens, throughout the county here. But, George, thank you so much. I've had the opportunity to work with a lot of elected officials, not in Pitt King County, but elsewhere. And you are a class act. You absolutely know where you're coming from, you're a straight shooter. But one thing that hasn't been mentioned is whenever you ultimately get frustrated on these Zoom meetings, I've noticed you just get up and walk away, so you disappear from the screen. That's when I know, okay, it's over. So, but George, we are gonna miss you. A lot of great things have been said, and just thank you for your support and just who you are as an individual and your grace that you've given all of us. So, thank you so much, George.
Okay, John Peacock.
I see Dave Pesnick.
Thanks, Steve. And yeah, this is, God, this feels like an end of an era for me personally, and I think it does for the county too, George. You were the chair when I was hired 10 years ago. That actually makes you the commissioner that I've served with or under in my career for the longest period of time. And you've made it special. So, I wanna thank you for that. But I wanna contradict a little bit of what some folks have said. One, that George's facial expressions give him away. There are a few things I totally remember. One was my interview. And when I came out of my interview, Molly and I were super excited to maybe have the opportunity to come up here. Well, how'd it go? I said, "I think four of them like me, but the chair, I really couldn't tell." He didn't crack a smile, there was no expression. He had a total poker face going. And I think a little bit like, damn, George, I was a little afraid of you when I came in. I gave him my chair. But I quickly learned what so many have said. One, once I got to spend a little bit of time with you, I got to understand the little signs that you would give, like scratching your head, or the quick smile, or the eyebrow raise, and exactly what that meant. It was always consistent, which was great. We always knew where you were at any given time. But you also really took time to care about the community, about the organization, and about the individuals in it. You know, a lot of my first with you have nothing to do with what we did at the county. You brought me on my first bull lap. It also happened to be the first bull lap that was extremely icy, and I hope it's the last one that I do along those lines. I don't know if you remember that, but I was just glad to make it down alive with you. You were the first commissioner I saw in a dunk tank, which happened a couple months after I started. You introduced me to the Aspen Institute. You took the time to kind of say, "You know, you should really go in and check this out." And you got me in the first program there. You took time to really get to know me individually and to make sure that I was getting the most out of being part of this community. And you're an advocate for the organization. Your legacy, I hope you look back and you're proud, George. And you've been such a strong champion for this community, for the values that you hold, whether it be the character of the community, the environment, safety in transportation. You have been a tireless advocate throughout your 12 years. So, we all owe you a great level of gratitude and thanks. And then I'll just close with one quote that does remind me of serving with you. And it's "A pessimist sees the difficulty in every opportunity, and optimism sees the opportunity in every difficulty," which was Winston Churchill. And one thing I could always count on you for is during a difficult time, you'd come up with, "Well, can we look at it this way? And, you know, is this really an opportunity for us to do something better for the community?" So, thank you. I've learned a lot from you, serving with you, serving under you. And I appreciate it.
Okay, Dave Pesnick, Jack, you're the only one who hasn't spoken. Do you wish to? You don't need to give you that opportunity.
I would love to, yeah, I would love to say something. Thank you. Yeah, George, it has really been a pleasure working with you. I've really enjoyed it. I echo everything everybody has said. I have certainly struggled with the facial expressions and understanding exactly when the eyebrows raised, what does that mean? The scratching of the head. But I think I, you know, I've only been in this position for two and a half years now, and I think I've started to figure it out a little bit. So, I, again, I really appreciate working with you. I think that you're an incredible leader. I think not even, even outside the Board of County Commissioners and the full 15-member EOTC, you've always been a leader. I think that the committee there has always looked up to you. And you've been really pushed, not only myself, but I think the whole committee passed our regular comfort zones. So, again, I really appreciate it. I hope, wish you all the best, of luck moving forward, and thank you again.
Okay, we have one, two more things to do here. One is, there is, it's not an official proclamation, but this comes from Pat Bingham. And this is a limerick that she wrote for George. And it says at the top, "George Newman, Pitt King County Commissioner, 2009 to 2021. There once was a commissioner named Newman, who at this stage of life said, 'I'm through, man.' He will sorely be missed by even those that were pissed by the decisions he made that were that true, man. When George landed in Aspen, he was frisky, superb telemarker and mountain guide. Perhaps it was doing what was risky that led to his leadership ride. No stranger to pushback and adversity, George kept his eye on outcomes he chose. From wilderness to the environment and community, up to the challenge, he rose. As a founder of Roaring Fork Leadership, future leaders were found and nourished. In his role on the Board of RASTA, mass transportation has grown and flourished. George could be serious and hold on tight to his beliefs, but in the mountains' delirious skiing power for relief, as a public servant and passionate citizen, George helped to write the book. He will leave Pitt King County with the legacy that he gave back more than he took." So, pass this around to.
Thank you, Pat Bingham.
So, I see that Judge Ely has come onto the call, and she's probably anxious that we get to cutting cake and things like that.
We need to let George speak, though.
And I don't know, Judge Ely, do you wanna say anything about George? You're muted. Justice is usually blind, but in this case, it's muted.
Oh, dear.
Let's let George speak.
He's mute. There we go.
There we go.
And our justice out front isn't blindfolded, you know that. The story, the miners wanted her to be able to see the rascals she was dealing with. So, here we are. And yes, I do wanna thank George. He's been a wonderful, made a lot of wonderful contributions. He's a neighbor and a good fellow, as they say. I think we'll miss him sorely and hope that he remains involved with our community efforts here. Has George already said something? Did I miss it?
No, we're gonna give him time now to speak.
So, thank you. And, you know, we haven't given George a chance to really speak. George, do you wanna make any comments? I'm sure you probably do.
I think, is he good? Are we gonna hear him?
Just make sure the red light's on there, George.
If I sit back and I take my mask off so no one can hear me otherwise.
Yeah, I think you can take your mask off.
Don't get it by me.
Well, thank you all for all your kind comments and for staff and core for your, what do you call those, those cards? Those, it's a whole new group, group cards. It's, I really enjoyed reading all those, so thank you. You know, one of the questions that I've always been asked over these last 12 years is, people have asked me, "Is your job difficult? And is it fun?" And in regards to being fun, I would always say, "Well, I wouldn't really characterize it as being fun." It's interesting and it's challenging, and it certainly has its moments, but I don't think it would be fun. But in regards to, is it difficult? And I've always responded by saying that it could have been difficult, and it can be difficult, except for the great staff that we and I have had over these last 12 years. And our staff are dedicated, they're knowledgeable, they're professional, and they've made my life so much easier at this table. And I can't tell you how many times I've asked staff for background information, a question that has been sent to me by a constituent. A lot of times I'll forward those emails right on to the appropriate staff, and I know staff gets back immediately, and I never hear any pushback from that constituent again. And so, you know, that's what has made this job so manageable, is the wonderful staff. And all of you and your staff and the county as a whole, it's just been an incredible journey. And it couldn't, it couldn't have been easier because of you. So, I really wanted to thank all of you. And it's just, I've made many new friends, new friendships over these last 12 years that I look forward to continuing, not only with staff, but certainly from those boards that I've served with, whether it be Core and Mona, or RASTA and Dan. It's been a great journey, so thank you. When it comes to the Board of County Commissioners, and that's a whole nother story. But I'm just kidding. You know, I've had the opportunity to work with eight different commissioners over the last 12 years. And we've always worked so well together. And we have had different, difference of opinions. And we've had passionate discussions. And I've seen commissioners, one commissioner almost jump over a table one time. But we've always strived, looked towards compromise, strive for consensus when we can on an issue. And even when we've had votes, whether it be 3-2 or 4-1, as Patty has said, we make those decisions, we take that vote, and then we move on. I've always called it a roving coalition. On one issue, I may be in complete opposite in my vote with one of our commissioners. And the next issue, we're in alignment. And I think that's what's made this board and our past boards so successful in doing our job in terms of meeting the needs of our community. I think we've, it's been really a pleasure working with all of you and all the past commissioners. And I think that's, and I know that will continue, so thank you all. Two quick anecdotes, I guess, if we have time. John Peacock, I got a letter from Tim McFlin today, he couldn't make it. And it reminded me, one of the first times John got, John was actually, hadn't been hired yet. He was in town, it was over the holidays, and he was in the office just trying to get sort of the feel of the place. And he walked into John Ely's office, and there sitting with John was myself and Tim McFlin. And in the middle of the room, in the middle of the table, we had a bottle of George Stranahan's Woody Creek Whiskey. And we were pouring shots. And Peacock didn't know what in the world he was getting into. We were just celebrating, we just, I just signed all the papers for the closure of the Droste Party up in property. And we were sitting in Ely's office, celebrating, and Peacock was just saying, "I don't think I'm at Mesa County any longer." And John Ely. And John Ely, I remember one of the times I was chair, and I walked into John's office, and it was in January, and I sat down, and John goes, "Well, what should we work on this year?" And there's always a whole host of issues. And I said, "I don't know, well, what's on your table?" And John goes, "Well, you know, there's this application for ongoing conditional water rights up at the Crystal that would actually put the historic District of Redstone underwater. What do you think we should do? We've never really challenged it." I said, "Well, let's get after it." And John with his staff, we were able to negotiate and basically extinguish those conditional water rights that would have put Redstone underwater and a new dam of placeta. So, again, working with staff has just been a wonderful experience. So, I can't, I can't say that enough. You know, in a few minutes, Francie and Steve and Greg are gonna be taking the oath of office. And I had the opportunity to do that three times. It was probably the most proud I've ever been and the most humble I've ever been in terms of taking the oath of office, saying that I'm gonna uphold and protect the Constitution of the United States. And given these tumultuous times, it just tells you how much that really means when our democracy is at risk, our republic is about to, was under threat. We had to have a president that incited an insurrection. We have a newly appointed Congresswoman who supported Trump's lies and perpetuated those actions. And so, for Francie, as a new commissioner, I'm sure you're gonna get the same feeling that I had when I first took that oath of office. And for Greg and Steve, and I know that you will do the job and honor what we all, what we all know and feel in terms of taking care of our community. And I guess lastly, I'd like to just thank, thank the citizens of Pitt King County for all of your support for these last 12 years. It's been an honor and a pleasure to work with you and to represent you as one of your county commissioners. So, thank you, and I'll miss you, but I'm not going very far.
You're here.
All right, you got me on that one, George.
So, let's see, how should we proceed here? John Peacock, I'm asking for advice. We have cake to eat, we have a swearing-in ceremony to do. Maybe we should do the swearing-in ceremony first, and then we could all eat cake after that. Does that sound, I mean, a lot of you aren't gonna be able to eat cake because you're not here, but if you're in the building, you could run down and get some.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. I would do the swearing-in ceremony, and then all eat cake in separate rooms.
Take it outside.
Well, at least we can hear each other. When it's outside the courthouse, it was pretty hard to hear with all the traffic. I think the best order would be Steve Child, then Greg Oshman, and then Francie Jacober, and we'll do it individually. So, Steve, would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Stephen F. Child.
I, Stephen F. Child.
You affirm that I will support.
Will affirm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter of Pitt King County.
And the.
Charter?
Charter of Pitt King County.
And the Charter of Picken County.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of a Picken County Commissioner.
Of a Picken County Commissioner.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you have just been affirmed.
Thank you.
And I believe there is a physical copy for you to sign. Jeanette probably will bring that along and then I will affirm that, that you took this oath. All right, Greg, will you raise your right hand? I, Greg Paul Poshman.
I, Gregory Paul Poshman.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter of Picken County.
And the Charter of Picken County.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of a Picken County Commissioner.
The duties of the office of a Picken County Commissioner.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're the.
Thank you. Greatful to do this with all of you here.
And maybe we could have it, I guess revised to have Gregory instead of Greg? Is it two G's, one G, G-R-E-G-O-R-Y?
Correct, that's correct.
All right. All right, and, um, Francie Jacober, will you raise your right hand?
I, Frances Perry Jacober.
I, Frances Perry Jacober.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado.
And the Charter of Picken County.
And the Charter of Picken County.
And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of a Picken County Commissioner.
The duties of the office of a Picken County Commissioner.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, so now what do we do, eat cake?
Eat cake. Thank you, Judge Ely.
So Kelly, are you in charge of the cake detail?
I think we were just going to do that during lunch break.
During lunch break, okay. Uh, any further comments from anybody here today before we break for lunch and cake eating?
I have one thing I'd like to say.
Francie.
I didn't say anything to you yet, George, so I just want to tell you that, uh, you know, I feel humbled following in your footsteps or trying to follow in your footsteps and I really look forward to working you, with you, uh, when you're available in the future and I appreciate the help you've given me so far and, um, thank you for setting such an incredible example.
Thanks, Francie, I'm sure you're going to do wonderful for us.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. We are going to, uh, adjourn here for lunch break and cake celebration with George. We will reconvene for our, rest of our work session at 1:30. So, thank you, everybody. Bye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, George.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
All right, I want to see what he's got.
Kelly, is our cake in the mail?
Okay, uh, good afternoon, everybody. Today is, uh, Picken County Commissioner Work Session of Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. We just had our swearing in ceremony about an hour ago and we have our new county commissioner, Francie Jacober, is here in the meeting room with us. And we actually have four commissioners here in the meeting room for the first time in months, literally months. So Patty Clapper and Kelly McNicholas Curry and myself are all in the meeting room. Greg Poshman is at home on the, on the Zoom call. And then John Peacock is also here. Uh, first on our agenda this afternoon, we.
Yeah.
Um, okay, I just want to make sure our volume's up because John Peacock was saying he couldn't hear us. Can you hear us now, John?
I hear you now, yeah.
Okay, so first on our agenda is the COVID-19 update. And John Peacock, uh, do you have an hour for this? Uh, take it away.
All right, thank you, Steve. Um, obviously, we had a conversation, uh, yesterday. Uh, today I'm going to spend a little bit of time updating on the, um, Board of Health meeting, uh, yesterday. Are you all seeing my screen now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. So, um, this is getting back into our, um, weekly, uh, update, so we'll cover, um, a little bit more today. Uh, we'll talk about, uh, data again. Uh, we will debrief from yesterday's Board of Health meeting and what changes we can anticipate to the public health order. Uh, talk a little bit about, uh, where folks can find information on financial resources for individuals, uh, and business, um, a vaccine update and questions. So, our incidence rate, um, the picture hasn't changed. We've ticked up a little bit, um, from where we were yesterday, uh, when I reported this. Um, we still remain at the, uh, upper limit of our, uh, projections, um, back in November. Um, and, and this is really, uh, what's driving, um, or what drove, I think, a lot of the Board of Health decision-making, um, yesterday. Uh, test positivity from yesterday has picked up, uh, over the last 14 days to 12.7, uh, from 12.6% and, uh, similarly about the same, uh, for children. Um, the Board of Health, uh, had a lengthy meeting yesterday. Oh, I see a question.
Yeah, a data-related question. Um, I, I missed a little bit of the discussion yesterday related to going to a seven-day incidence rate and what that, how that's helpful. So can you, can you just explain that pretty quickly?
Yeah, um, I, I don't know that I can give you the right technical explanation for that, Kelly, but it is a metric that both, uh, CDC and Johns Hopkins, uh, are using. And, um, our, we, we've been aligning with the state, which has been using a 14-day, uh, average. It, it obviously takes longer for a 14-day average to so, show, uh, changes in a trend, uh, than, than seven days. And so the Board of Health requested that, um, the numbers be reported, uh, both ways. And, uh, uh, the, the idea is that a seven-day trend will give us a, an earlier indicator of whether data is trending, uh, in the right direction. And our, uh, Epi staff seem to readily agree with that.
Thanks.
Yeah. Um, so the major areas, um, that, uh, the Board of Health gave direction on yesterday, um, is, is moving to, uh, the red level of, uh, the state restrictions on the dial, um, with some, uh, additional guidance. So, uh, the, the main area is impacted. Indoor dining, um, at restaurants, uh, is, uh, will be prohibited. Um, takeout, herb-side delivery and outdoor dining, uh, will still be allowed. Um, last call will be now at 8:00 PM. This will not take effect until, um, uh, 12:01 AM on Sunday. So, um, the restaurants will be able to, to, um, work through some of their inventory and such, uh, through Saturday. Um, ski areas will be, um, working on improving mask and distancing enforcement, uh, in areas where there are congregation. Uh, there'll also be no indoor dining, uh, on the mountain. Um, and we'll continue a moderate capacity, um, on the, on the mountains in accordance with the ski area plan. Uh, there has not been any days where, uh, any of the mountains, uh, have exceeded, um, the capacities, um, that, that were talked about while we were doing the, the ski area plan. But we'll continue to monitor that. And if we are seeing, um, an uptick or an exceedance in that capacity, uh, we'll talk to SkiCo about a reservation plan. Um, changes for lodging, um, enforcing the one household per unit regardless of when a reservation was made. Um, that is, um, definitely causing a lot of questions and, and feedback today, um, as well as limiting capacity to 50% occupancy, um, which would be measured on a weekly, uh, average, not a, a daily, uh, occupancy. Um, and then the Board prioritized, uh, the county applying for the five-star program, uh, for the state's five-star program. Um, what that would mean if accepted is five-star certified businesses would be a, able to operate at increased capacity, but that would only be after, uh, two weeks of sustained decline in incidence rate. Um, per, there's a state report card for the five-star program and I'll, I'll share some of that on the next slide. Um, rest is. Okay, so the five-star eligibility for counties in the red level, um, we would have to meet, um, the following criteria. I previously mentioned the two-week sustained decline in incidence rate. Um, that is, uh, two-week sustained decline on a three-day rolling average is how we understand the state is measuring that. Um, a test positivity rate under 10% or 10 cumulative days of decline, uh, from the previous 14-day period. And then under 90% of ICU beds, uh, in use and, and steady or declining regional hospitalizations. It changes a little bit, um, for counties that, um, whose metrics are in the orange, yellow or blue level. Um, there actually percent positivity is 15% or lower and of course the incidence rate, uh, needs to be below 350. This is a cut and paste, uh, from the state's, uh, report card. I believe this is the most recent one we have going through, um, January 9th. Um, as you can see on the incidence rate, we obviously, um, have not had, uh, 14 days uh, of decline on these three-day rolling averages. So on that measure, um, the county would fail. In terms of our percent positivity, the state has us at 10.8%. Um, for red level restrictions, um, we are not passing on that. If we were in orange or lower, uh, we would. And then hospitalizations, um, we do pass on both of those criteria. And so what we're really looking, um, for in order to qualify for the five-star program, um, is a drop, um, a, a 14-day trend or drop in the incidence rate as well as getting our test positivity rate, uh, down below 10%. So those are going to be the metrics that we're tracking. Um, we'll start reporting out on this report card on a more regular basis, um, going forward.
I have one quick question.
See if there're.
John?
On the hospitalizations, if we had three in one day but none the whole rest of a week, are they doing an average of hospitalizations or if you just have one day with three people admitted, are you doomed? Even though you have no other people in the hospital? So it's one?
Yeah, and Francie, uh, yeah, so that, that metric, um, is, is challenging on a couple of levels. So, um, it's, if you have one day with three hospitalizations in a 14-day period, and this applies to all counties with a population, uh, under 30,000. So you could have several consecutive days, um, with two admissions, um, where hospital capacity could get filled, uh, locally. Um, or you can have three admissions from the county and it doesn't have to be to your local hospital. It can be, uh, from somebody with a Picken County address getting admitted to any hospital in the state. Um, so if you do have three, um, that pushes you into the red there.
And then likewise, if you had a tourist come here and get sick and go home to their own hospital, that doesn't count?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
And then, um, you know, I, I do think it, um, weighed on the, the Board of Health yesterday that we did have, uh, two hospitalizations at, at AVH, um, in, in ICU.
But, but John, doesn't it also mean that if we had five people in CU who got hospitalized with COVID but their ZIP code was 81611, that would count towards our hospital bed issue?
Yeah, so if, if they have a Picken County address and they're hospitalized anywhere in the state of Colorado, so it could be a front range, I think this is what you're asking.
Yeah, exactly.
Then it would count against, yeah.
So a student who goes to CU and gets sick down there is a debit against us if they're from here?
Um, you know, we, we've talked about that. I think it depends on whether they are given credit for their CU address or this home address here.
And then I just wanted to say that at the meeting yesterday, uh, the doctor was asked whether the two people who are in ICU are in ICU because they're really sick. And he said, "No, it doesn't mean that. All COVID patients go into ICU whether they're really sick or not really sick." So, uh, because that's the only place where we have that, I don't know, pressurized air thing, yeah.
It's, uh, that's, they have, uh, negative pressure rooms.
Yeah.
Kelly?
Yeah, no, I heard that too, but I do think we have to keep in mind, we've also heard from the doctors that people who are generally getting admitted for COVID are really sick. Otherwise, they are being treated at home.
Yeah.
Any more questions on this? So, um, the idea is to, um, submit our application for the five-star program. We will need to get letters of support from, um, municipalities uh, and to get the program approved and stood up so that when our metrics do qualify, um, we'll be able to, uh, open certified businesses, um, back up.
Steve, I have another question, that's okay?
Kelly, again?
Yeah, with regards to that, um, who, what is the roster of letters of support? Is there any risk that, you know, the medical advisory team won't submit a letter or the hospital won't agree to? What does that look like?
Yeah, so, um, and Kelly, I don't have the list right in front of me, but, um, it, it's very similar to the list that we had to get, um, for, uh, our first variant. So, um, we will. So we will actually need to write one from the Board of County Commissioners. We will need one from the hospital and that in this case, it would come from our hospital district. So either Dave Ressler or their board would be approving that letter as well as the municipalities. And I I may be missing someone off that list because I'm doing that off the top of my head from last time.
But that would include Basalt too, right? It would include Basalt?
Yes, because Basalt's, yeah, their boundaries overlap here. The Board of Health also adopted metrics as we talked about yesterday that we will move into red if our incidence rate is above 700 for 14 days or if one dial metric is in red for 14 days and a second metric goes into the red during any period of time or for any period of time during that 14 days. And basically move out of red if our incidence rate is below 700 and has been decreasing for 14 days. Kelly, as you had mentioned before, there is an ask from the Board of Health to track both seven and 14 day incident rate trends. So on the financial assistance resources, we did push out information yesterday. This is all available on the county's website, but we have pushed out information for financial, you know, for individuals and then also for businesses so that we can hopefully start to take advantage of some of the funding and resources that have been made available through the the federal and state governments. Not all businesses will apply or will will apply and or qualify for for all of this relief, but we did push this out yesterday and we're continuing to to push it out today. In terms of county funding, we're now working with the Aspen Community Foundation on all three kind of legs that we have previously budgeted. That includes a navigator program. Nan and her team have been working closely with Aspen Community Foundation on the parameters of of that program. It does look like we will be able to hopefully stand up a bilingual, bicultural navigation program by the end of the month. And we are still working to thread together some donor funds so that that can extend beyond Picking County. Nonprofit support, again, Nan and and her team have been working closely with their nonprofit partners and also the Aspen Community Foundation. They've determined that there would be a process for distribution of these $400,000 that we had previously talked about in January and March to nonprofits that are providing direct services to individuals and families that that are affected by the economic downturn caused by by COVID. We are finalizing an agreement. Matter of fact, I was looking at that right before jumping back on to this meeting. That includes some of the the language that we need to be consistent with the coronavirus relief funds. And then tomorrow, we're meeting with Aspen Community Foundation to talk more about the parameters and process for a business grant program that we had appropriated the $1.3 million for. I'd like to be able to bring that back for hopefully a thumbs up from the board next Tuesday and target application launch after that meeting. So more to come on that.
Kelly?
Thank you. Thanks, John. Gosh, I just would encourage if we can get that navigator program stood up faster, I think the demand is really going to start to roll in for where people should go. And along those lines, will will we be creating a hotline again to field inquiries from people? Because again, I I really expect those to start coming in within a week.
Yeah, so we we have a a number stood up, but the navigator program was intended. We are a little off on this timing, Kelly. But the navigator program will have a a number and website associated with it. We will work to get that stood up as soon as we can. And talking with Aspen Community Foundation, they really felt like it it was probably going to take a couple of weeks and that was going to be a pretty fast standup.
Greg?
Thanks, Steve. On that same note, this is Kelly's question regarding the business grant program. I'm wondering how much it differs from what we've previously approved regarding our cooperation with ACF and the donors? And could we give tacit approval today for something that is probably isn't too different from what we've already done? Is that a some, am I making too many assumptions? Could we could we give you tacit approval today just so that you're not waiting if we need to at least rule it out sooner?
Yeah, so the good news, Greg, is I I think you did that in a previous work session. What we want to do in working with our partners, I think they're bringing some experience to the table where we might want to tweak those recommendations and the application process to make it quicker. So ACF has distributed funds to businesses. We're looking, we want to take some of the key learnings from that process, see if we can fine tune it, make it a little quicker and bring back any changes so you're aware of them before we launch the program. Any other questions? I can't see everyone, so I'm counting on you, Steve.
Nope, John, you're good.
Vaccination updates. We are in, still finishing up phase 1B. We are through first and frankly, a number of of second shots with healthcare workers. We are really focused now on our population that's aged 70 or older. We have been prioritizing residents, but we also will be focused on getting vaccinations for second homeowners and long term renters. This weekend, we did get our first 100 shots out to the the 70 plus crowd. We also have just over 1,100 vaccines that are coming to us this week. We are in the process of notifying folks who have registered of their qualification to to make appointments. Right now, we're getting about a 24 to 48 hour lead time out to folks. We're hoping to get that extended to four or five days as vaccine distribution becomes a little bit more predictable in terms of what we're going to get when. This week, we'll be doing vaccinations on Thursday and Friday for those that are registered and have an appointment. The way selections are being made is we have asked residents to go out and pre-register on the county's website. So far, we have about 2,600 individuals who are 70 and older who have pre-registered. We're, as we get our allocation of of vaccines and know how many of these first shots we have to give, we are basically selecting from that qualified group using a random sample and we're making appointments from there. So we're not stacking people up waiting in line as as we're seeing in in some other communities.
Francie?
Right now.
John, Francie has a question?
Yep.
So I got a letter that said that, you know, like I hadn't been qualified or I wasn't on the list to get a vaccination, even though I had pre-registered and I'm over 70. So does that mean my name is going to go to the end of the list or till a whole another group is drawn? How does that work? Did you get one?
I got one, yeah.
Did it say the same thing?
I think it meant, Francie, that our names weren't drawn in the random drawing. There were another 100, 100 people were drawn for the first round.
It didn't say anything about time when they let us know again, so?
So I think we're just in the pool of the 2,600 remaining to have our names potentially drawn.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That that's right. And so Francie, our our goal is obviously to to get everyone in that age group who is willing to get vaccinated vaccinated before moving on to the next round. One of the difficulties we have in projecting right now is we're not, we don't know how much vaccine we're going to have for next week yet. So right now, we've been working with about 24 to 48 hour lead times to to really know that. We think that that's going to get extended out and so that we'll be able to contact folks four to five days ahead of time for those schedules. The goal is by the end of February to be through this first round of shots with for everyone 70 and older. That's the state's goal. Obviously, hopefully, we'll be ahead of that.
Patty?
Yeah, two things, John. I need you to define what random means. Is it just drawing your name out of a hat? And the second thing is, is I got a call earlier with a question that they were going to have a drive through in your car shot vaccination program at the Aspen Music Tent? So first random and then music tent?
So, yeah, so the the random sample, Patty, is that, so everyone who meets that qualification of being a resident, second homeowner, long term renter, they are, they create a pool of folks who are eligible to get vaccinated. In order not to slow the process, basically what we've done is we're drawing a a random sample. So you're right, it's kind of like drawing from a hat, although that's not what we're doing. It's a it's a computer generated random sample and and then we're getting those folks scheduled. And so Francie, I think the letter, as Steve said, that you got said you weren't selected in that first one, but you're still in the pool to get vaccinated.
Thanks.
As far as the music tent goes, right now, we are using two locations and we do not want to encourage people to go and camp out at the music tent or such, but that is one of the locations that we are setting up in cooperation with the city for a drive drive through site, yes.
Okay, John. And yesterday, I think it was Dave Ressler who said 11, we were expecting 1,100 doses. Is that still, we still on track with that? They were supposed to have been here this week.
Yeah. Yeah, that is our expectation. That's what we are planning when they get here. So we anticipate those will arrive either today or tomorrow. And then we will have our drive, we will have the shots scheduled for Thursday and Friday.
Okay, great. Thank you, John. I think the public will appreciate that clarification.
John, there were, there was a question from residents in the Crystal Valley if there was going to be a vaccination clinic down there at some point. I think if we could do that for those residents and maybe the ones in the Basalt throwing pan area also maybe could get their vaccinations in Basalt, but to do it efficiently, we'd have to just call all the people from that area on a two day period rather than have a few of them called there and the rest of them another week. So is there, what is the discussion on doing that?
Yeah, so now we we are talking that as vaccines vaccines become more widely available, that we will seek out more sites, including doing some mobile vaccination clinics in our in our more dispersed communities. As you all know, I I think by now that the vaccines take a lot of special handling. And so to split up multiple groups of small doses right now to to push out into the community is really inefficient. And and so as as the vaccine becomes more broadly available, absolutely, we're finding multiple channels to get those out. And, you know, we're we're looking at at some of our pharmacies and such that are applying to be approved as as vaccine providers too as as they get more widely available. So the short answer is yes, Steve. We are looking forward to doing that kind of planning, but because we do not know exactly how the the vaccine is going to roll out on what timelines, we we haven't scheduled those at this time, but we are, we do have that in our planning.
Okay, thanks.
So phase 1B is really divided into the two separate phases, kind of 1B1 and and 1B2. The group of eligible employees and essential workers greatly expands when you get to the second phase of 1B. We're going to be working through some prioritization within this group because we think that the vaccine is still going to come in in batches and in quantities that are not adequate to do everyone at at one time, but it's going to roll out over over a couple of months. So we're going to be working with different representatives in the community and trying to come up with some consensus around how we prioritize between these different functions and such if if the the vaccines are still coming in in a in a pretty metered way. Likewise, in our own organization, we've been going through, as you've probably seen in some emails, just some rough prioritization processes and such that we know when we get a batch of vaccines for being part of this group, we know how we're going to distribute those right away in the organization.
Kelly?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I'm wondering, I'm a little curious as to how those conversations are going to go because these are obviously based on work sectors and our work community is composed of of populations from Garfield and Eagle County in addition to Picking County. So, you know, if you're looking at grocery store workers, are you looking at grocery store workers who live in Picking County? Are you looking at, you know, grocery store workers who work in a pod? Are you working at, looking at, you know, are we coordinating with Eagle and Garfield about, you know, about the timing on that? So you're actually like getting a whole sector along the same amount of time? And I would just say, you know, I think some consideration should be given towards our Latino population, giving the major significantly disproportionate burden of the disease that they're bearing. So a question and a comment.
Yeah, so, yep. So Kelly, we we are meeting with Garfield and Eagle Counties. I don't think, frankly, the the three counties probably aren't far enough along in their own. I think we're all at the same stage of working through the logistics of 1B1 and I think we're in a pretty similar profile on how we're moving through that. And we're all starting these discussions, so we will have a sense of of how aligned we are. We are allocated vaccine dosages really based on our our population. We are allocated vaccine dosages really based on our, our population and such. And so we have not answered that question, but it is on our, our minds. How do we deal with the, the fact that our workforce is really spread amongst mostly three jurisdictions for, for this purpose? So more to come on that. That's on our radar screen too.
Okay, good, John.
Okay. Well, I'm going to get, this would be a record if I get through this because I'm already to questions and discussion.
Patty?
John, real quick, on the employee information, I'm still confused, sorry to say. But if the already, I'd already filled out applications for the general pool with Department of Public Health. Did we need to do a separate one just specific to Picken County or?
Yeah, for the, for the, for the employee one, Patty, a, a number of employees will qualify to get vaccinated sooner for other reasons, whether it's age or, or other qualifications under the, the state program. But if you are in line because of what you're doing with the county, then you will need to, will need, will have a registration process assigned.
So you need another one, even though when I pull it up, it's the same form I already filled out for the general pool form? So I'll just do it again and you, I mean, I've probably got four of them on file now. What's the heck with having five?
Well, like we said, Patty, it's just more needle sticks for you.
I know. It's okay, I can handle it. All right, I'll go back and try and fill it out.
So Patty, the one question that was different on the county employee one, it asks if you qualify under some other group, for example, the 70 and over or the, you know, whatever, the, the different.
And who did we get that from on the county level? Who sent that out?
That was the county.
I know, but what person under email?
It did, it, I think it was from Kathy Litskin.
Okay.
Our risk manager.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and really, we're trying to centralize for county employees inquiries and such going through Kathy.
Kelly?
Yeah, I just have some sensitivity about how that gets prioritized because, you know, some county employees really have the benefit of being able to do their work from home, remain isolated, you know, those kind of things in, separate from maybe other considerations about age and health condition. So just given the scarcity of where we're at, I just have some sensitivity about how that, you know, those decisions get made and how those, how our own staff gets prioritized.
Yeah, so Kelly, that was one of, we basically use a, a four kind of step process for setting up the tiers. And one of them is exactly what you talked about is, you know, can this function be performed remotely or at home versus whether it has to be performed in person? So for example, you know, in, in my job, by and large, I've been able to, to do remotely. And so for those functions that can't be and, and have interactions with the public, that would be a criteria to prioritize those positions over mine for vaccination. Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yep.
And so that's one of multiple actors that we used to try and set up our, our prioritization.
Francie?
I have a couple of questions. One's about this. The other one, are, is this the question period for everything you presented or just for vaccinations?
Whatever you want to ask about.
Okay. All right, my first question is.
Usually everything. When it gets to the slide, it's open.
Okay, you only have two more questions you already asked.
It doesn't say restaurant workers. It says food and agriculture. Does that include restaurant workers?
Right now, it does not, is our understanding. And there is a far more detailed list, listing than this. We've tried to summarize categories. I do know that that has been a conversation with the Restaurant Association at, at the state and CDPHE. And I know, I believe the governor was having a, a press conference today about COVID response. So sometimes, you know, changes are announced there. But right now, Francie, I think this is really focused on food production.
Okay. Because you know, when Kelly was saying worrying about the Latinx population, that's, oh, that's restaurants. And that's the kitchen in restaurants. And they're not going home. They're not the waitstaff. They're in the kitchen and washing the dishes and that kind of stuff. So anyway, that's that comment. And then my other one was about some, somebody from Redstone who said that they saw in the paper that these restrictions are for Aspen and Snowmass. It didn't say all of Picken County, and I don't know whether the paper's incorrect. And I don't know if you were there when Greg asked for me yesterday at the BOH meeting about Redstone. But Bill Matson somewhat disingenuously said, well, I'd like to ask for Snowmass. If Redstone gets it, well, Snowmass and Redstone are worlds apart. So anyway, I'd like to answer that person's question. Is it for Aspen and Snowmass? Or is it for everybody in Picken County? Did the paper make a mistake? Do you know?
Well, so in terms of the, the vaccinations?
No, in terms of the restrictions, the public health order.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I probably didn't preface it. Well, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So there were no exceptions made for sub-geographies within Picken County. So the restrictions that we talked about up here and the changes apply to all businesses in Picken County.
And will there be any avenue for a, a business asking for an exemption?
Not at this time. The avenue is going to be, would be wanting to there's qualification for Red Star.
Taken.
Is the way.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So when the whole county's metrics qualify for Red Star, then businesses can certify, yeah, and they'd be able to operate.
Okay, thank you.
Five star.
Kelly?
Yeah, and I, thanks Francie for pointing out, I think, the way that my statement could be misinterpreted. So I just want to be clear about what I was trying to get at. It looks like to me for the vaccination schedules that the acti, the sectors chosen are based on essential activities and kind of, you know, our longstanding understanding of what essential activities have been throughout the pandemic. And I, I was just, I was saying that, you know, I think that our Latinx population is delivering many of our essential activities. And, you know, so I don't want to give the impression that we should readjust priorities that way. But I think that, you know, when we're looking within some of these essential activities that you can prioritize sectors that have more of a predominant Latinx. You know, again, because I think the decisions about vaccines are being made to extend vaccines to populations that carry the burden and the risk. So we know our over 70 population, regardless of how healthy you may be over 70, you're carrying a higher burden of risk. Our Latinx population is disproportionately carried a higher burden of risk. So, so I don't want it to be misinterpreted that I'm, I'm saying to, you know, you know, skip around in the, you know, putting on non-essential workers ahead of essential workers. And so I just want to clarify that.
No, I didn't, I didn't hear that. Okay.
Well, thanks.
John, I have two questions. One has to do with the hotel occupancy rate. There was something, it was 50%, but then that was averaged over the week. Does that mean that, for instance, they could be more crowded on the weekend and compensate by being less crowded during part of the week?
That's correct.
Because they had asked, kind of asked for that to be able to, there, you know, the waves of people come in and they'll be more crowded or more demand at one, for a couple of days and then nobody for a few days, but that would accommodate them in that respect?
Yeah, and, and there are some challenges with this one that we're, we're still working through. The, you know, the, the staff's recommendation was actually to monitor this and, and potentially bring it back. I, I think the, the Board of Health felt that, you know, we, we needed to take more significant steps across more sectors, is fair to say. But we're, we're still working through, you know, what enforcement, when folks are booked and the fact that we asked these properties to break up households. And so in some cases, what properties have done is they've split up two households that were originally going to stay in one unit together into two separate units. And so it makes their occupancy look higher, even though the numbers aren't. So we're, we're trying to figure out some of those pieces right now.
Okay. The second question has to do with the national guidelines where now they are saying they were going to prioritize 65 years old and older, changing that from the 70 years and older. How does that play out at the state level and at our level?
Well, so we, that, that actually came across my phone, I think, around noon today, Stephen. I, I don't think we've heard, we've been very much trying to stay lockstep with the State Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and their prioritization and vaccination plan that they laid out because they're making the, the decisions on distributing the vaccine. They've been very clear that their priorities may change as information changes. You know, whether that be a direction from CDC, new scientific information, whatever that wants to be. And so i- it's very possible that we're going to, to see that change. And if, if it does change, and we don't know that it does, basically what that means is it will put more people into, into this category. And we have had, let's see, so far, 6,567 people pre-register. We know that about 2,600 of those are 70-plus. And I want to say when you go to 65, it, it pops up to around 3,500. And so what that means is it will take us longer to get through 1B1 to get to these next levels, if, if that happens. But I have not seen yet if that's changed at the state level.
And do we have the capability to just make up our own mind? For instance, we're already doing the 70-plus, then we want to do these essential frontline workers. Then we'll get to the 65 and older, even though the guidelines changed. Would we have that lea, leeway?
The, the state is really holding communities to getting through these stages as they've defined them before being able to move on to the next. So the way it stands right now, unless it's changed, Steve, is we need to get through a, a certain percentage of vaccinating, 70, folks aged 70 or older, before we can move on to the next stage of 1B or move on to Stage 2. And so I, I think the short answer is no, we're, we're beholden to the, to the state process if they change this.
Okay. And it's, you know, it's a little bit confusing. Because you look at news reports across the country. Florida was vaccinating 65 and older. Alaska is vaccinating 65 and over. So different states are doing it differently than Colorado. And that probably confuses people when they hear that and then wonder why, well, why is Colorado different?
Fair enough, yeah. And, and, you know, we're, we're an administrative arm of the state, basically. And so we, we'll be looking for any changes to that state distribution. Now, within categories like this, if we need to do some prioritization, the state's given discretion for that. And so counties and public, local public health agencies are, are approaching that in different ways.
Francie?
I know you're going to think I'm a broken record on this, John, but I just have to ask about enforcement. So, because like on New Year's Eve, I was in Carbondale and there were a couple of restaurants that were packed with people. And they're supposed to be at whatever it is, 25%, I think, or something. But anyway, even if they're supposed to be at 50%, and I was like, well, what happens when a restaurant has more than 25% or has people sitting inside or a lodge has more than 50% occupancy? Who knows? I mean, you know, especially the lodges. I mean, are we going to go around and count rooms in the lodges? And who would do that? And how does that happen? Or does it not happen?
And you're, you're, you're pointing out a, a lot of the challenges. We did create a consumer protection team early on. And so we do have employees who are dedicated to working with businesses on compliance. Obviously, our, our first approach is always around voluntary compliance. So it's about education, warnings, corrections, those sorts of things. We do have a process where we escalate enforcement concerns through, you know, a, a verbal discussion to a warning letter, to a notice of violation. And then we either go to a notice of closure or a, a violation of the, the public health order, which can carry a, a fine or, or jail time. That needs to go through litigation before those can be imposed. And so it's a, it, it's not a super expedient process. We have used our closure authority, but fairly sparingly when there are really egregious circumstances. So for example, over the New Year's holiday, we had partnered with law enforcement as well as having our own consumer protection team on the ground. City of Aspen also has a consumer protection team that was supporting us. And, and we did the rounds and we did issue some warning letters, notice of violation and one closure order during, during that time. We obviously don't, Carbondale's in Garfield County. And I'm not, I'll, I'll be honest, I'm not as familiar with how they're approaching enforcement there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kelly and then Patty?
I didn't have a question.
Okay, Patty?
John, this is, this is a totally off, different topic. You know, part of the discussion has also been about antibody testing. Do, is, do we have any availability for the general public or do, should people just go through their primary care providers?
Yeah, so for antibody testing right now, Patty, it, it doesn't tell you if you've got an active infection. It tells you if you've been exposed previously. We've really put our energies into expanding either PCR testing or antigen testing availability to know that whether there's a current infection or not. We have not done the antibody testing, you know, as that would, you know, be useful probably in a whole population to understand how much it's spread since March, but doesn't help us with containment. So I do know some providers, and I, I don't know who they are off the top of my head, are doing antibody testing. For those, those who are curious, you, you can find out. But it, it, it will cost whatever the provider is charging.
Right. So best thing for me to do is just tell these people to contact their primary care. And I, and my understanding, as people have asked me, are people who have, feel that they've probably already been through the process of having contracted COVID and recovered with being asymptomatic or mildly symptomatic. And the other thing is, is they may have tested more than once in a negative manner and thinking, why am I continuing to test negative? Wouldn't it be better for me just to get the antibody testing and have that done and over with? So, okay, that's perfect. And I'll just continue to refer them to, until things change, to their primary care physician. Thanks, John.
And I, can I contribute a little bit to that? Because, you know, I think public health guidelines, from what I understand, they, they have shifted. So, you know, we know that there's an opportunity for reinfection. But we also know that that window is a big window. So from what I understand right now, if you've had COVID and then you are exposed to someone who has COVID within 90 days, you're not, you're not going to be quarantined because you've had that within the 90 days. And that's the CDC guidance right now.
Right, that was discussed briefly at the meeting.
Yeah, so that is sort of reflective of like how long the antibodies, what they know, how long the antibodies, you know, stay in your body and continue to prevent reinfection for.
Well, there is a percentage of the population who was, was infected early on,
Sure.
which was a year ago, almost, and still feel that they are protected. And I'm saying, well, you know, you may continue to test negative, but you may want to see if you still have any antibody.
That's not what the guidance says, though.
You may want to have, continue to check to see if you still have antibody resistance. Not an easy virus to track. That's the one thing we know for sure.
And I, I just think we need to be careful that, that the test doesn't measure immunity at all. It just tells you whether you have the antibody.
Right.
That's really what tells you.
Yeah.
Francie?
Who are those two people who spoke at the meeting yesterday and said they have this available when we're ready for it? Was that tests? They were from the private sector?
Yeah.
Aspen COVID.
Yep, and, yeah, and I've, I've been visiting with them and still working to get them hooked up with the state. So they actually are running a, a local lab. So they're able to turn around PCR and antigen tests fairly quickly. And so we're hoping to get financial support to do some, some serial testing in these higher-risk areas.
But currently they're charging for those, that testing?
I, I can fill you in. Can I fill her in? Because when I thought I had to fly out to see my mom this last week, I decided I was going to do one of those rapid tests before I got on an airplane to go visit my mom. So I signed up, it was really easy to do, went online to the county website for testing, was able to pull it up. They have a location at the old hub bicycle shop across from the Wheeler. It's $175 you can pay using your Health Savings account card, or you can pay out of your own pocket. And it, they had openings available. And they can turn around the test anywhere from half an hour to an hour, that kind of, about that timeframe. And it is definitely a rapid test, it is done rapidly. And they had lots of appointment availability. So it's just one more option. I, I don't know, I think it's a nasal swab, but, and it's not a blood draw. So, yeah.
Oh, sorry, Patty.
Yeah, but, but that's just another, it's just one more option that's out there in the community.
But it sounded like they were willing to go, I don't know, to help you guys out more.
That's why they're talking with John. They're just trying to see, John and I talked briefly about it. They're just trying to create a relationship, if that's possible, to bring them, you know, more firmly into our toolbox.
Okay.
And I'll just, yeah, just take a further opportunity to sort of educate a little bit on that is, you know, the antigen testing is, is great, but if you are symptomatic and have a negative antigen test, you know, you would be recommended to go get a PCR test to confirm that. So just keep that in mind for the public, that a negative antigen test does not have the highest degree of confidence to it, especially if you are experiencing symptoms of COVID.
So, John, are they just antigen testing or are they PCR?
They're, they actually, they have both types of, of tests available. They have different turnaround times associated with them. You know, antigen testing is, to Kelly's point, it's oftentimes used for serial testing, but it, it tends to be less accurate.
And it's like a 10-minute turnaround or less.
Yeah, if, if you do have a, if you have a positive, it probably means you're positive. But if you have symptoms and a negative, it doesn't necessarily mean that. Oftentimes that needs to be confirmed with a PCR test.
But COVID Aspen, that, that entity is offering both. The question for me wasn't both, it was to have the PCR. So it was a little more confirmed or not confirmed.
Francie?
I think that the, my current employee and her whole family have been serial tested for free in, in Garfield. Is, is, do we do that for free in Poughkeepsie County?
There is free testing available. We've been partnering with the state. And actually, on our website, there is a test binder.
Yeah, right, I've seen that. But I meant, I'm sorry to interrupt, but what I meant was can you get a series of tests in a row through the county and still have everyone be free? That's, I, I've been on the website and seen all the free locations. You know what, can you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, we're not, we're not restricting both. Billy, Francie, what we've, I, I know Garfield has partnered with the state on testing events. And so we, we set up testing in, in Snowmass at the airport and in Aspen and Basal that is not restricted in terms of people accessing it. In the case of outbreaks, we do have public health-supported serial testing. So, for example, in the event of a, a restaurant outbreak, we will go in and test all the potential contacts or, or employees. Oftentimes that's with one of the antigen tests, like a Binax, an Abbott Binax now test. So we are offering that also. And then what we are talking to the state about, it, the testing is very expensive. You know, it, it adds up fairly quickly, you know, whether it's 75 or 100 bucks a test as you're, you're doing serial testing. And so the, the state has tried to be targeted in what they're supporting, as, as have we, frankly.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, Greg?
Yeah, hi, thanks, John, this is all good. It's, it's good to see you again, it's been so long since we've gone. I remember Kelly brought up some, yesterday, she was hoping and asking for more information from the business community. So we knew really if we could track schedules and whereabouts, you know, multiple jobs among employees, things that really create an opportunity for spread. I think that'd be really helpful, and I know it's probably hard to get. But if we're going to try to be reaching and getting the entire community to pull together to help us get a grip on this thing, we're going to need everyone to pitch in. And, and it means data collection, as, as Kelly pointed out. And I, I, the reason I keep thinking about it is because I'm not convinced that there's a real understanding of the risk or the rules regarding, regarding mask wearing and distancing. We've heard people say, well, I'm, I'm on the other side of the river in Aspen, so I'm outside the mask zone. So I don't need to wear a mask, or I've crossed the street and, and I'm okay. You know, if, if you're going to work multiple jobs, it's possible that you're part of the transmission. And I think the whole point of this is that what we really need to do is stop feeding new people to this virus. It's really worth feeding this virus with, with people who can host it, right? And, and I'm hoping through better communication or more communication, we've talked about this also, what else can we do to communicate and market to the community? Some of whom on our calls yesterday didn't seem particularly up to speed on, on where we are in, in battling this virus. And so I'm, I'm hoping that, that new initiatives for communication and outreach to the community come part and parcel with this. And, and I'm, I'm hoping that Tracy or our PIO or whomever can, you know, we could, we have, maybe we have to redouble or rethink our efforts to communicate with the town. I went back and looked at, the Washington Post had an article back in March where they were first describing how virus spreads. And there's a great animation, I think I may have shared it with some of you, that just shows, you know, what a network of people do and how physically you share this virus. And I almost think that it'd be time to circle that stuff back around again so people really understand that when you contact another human being, you're creating another network and opportunity to transmit. And, and it, we've heard it so many times, but I think we need to hit it again. Thanks. I don't know if that was a question, it was more like, this is what I'm concerned about. I did, I did, before you, before I finished, one last thing was, I did see a note regarding people who are being vaccinated or have been in the county seeing some side effects or, you know, effects of the vaccination, maybe just in feeling a little sick or something. Can you articulate any more about that?
I, I would probably need to chat with our, our staff working on it because most of the information I've heard has been positive, actually, that any side effects are such, and very minor.
Well, we've been watching Steve now for, you know, since he had it, and he seems to be okay.
But I, I, I can ask for an update on that, Greg, I'm not sure I'm the best one to, to answer that one right now.
Right, and then just getting back to the outreach, you know, I don't know if we need some new ideas or just new energy or, or what, that maybe there'll be an opportunity to get an update on that at some point on, you know, how are we reaching out to all these people who are one at risk and the other ones that have been, you know, that are in financial insecurity now due to the new restrictions?
Yeah, and so just, just so the, the board knows, we did put together resource sheets, both for individuals and, and businesses. And I guess sheets is outdated, emails, whatever you call those. And those were distributed through our networks with links to the same information that is on the website about where services are available, both public and nonprofit support for individuals and, and businesses right now. And we'll be continuing to expand on that. So that's gone out through the networks that the Chamber, you know, State Snowmass, so on and so forth. So we are, we are pushing that information out. We think those networks are actually more effective than some other ways that we, we push it out through our website or what.
I just have to get my church course.
Patty and then Patty?
Yeah, John, I just received a text message from someone, so perfect timing. He was just recently told by somebody at Community Health that Community Health, that the county, I'm going to quote this, the county took over the vaccine administration from Community Health. This gentleman and his wife were registered, both had email appointments, which were later canceled last week. He said they should both still be on the registration list for the vaccination, but he wants to make sure that they are. He, they didn't have an email or phone number to call, so he doesn't know what to do.
Okay, so the, first, we, we did have some folks that were scheduled, but we didn't receive enough doses to get through all of them. My understanding is they will be prioritized and contacted in this, this next round. So those should be going out today and tomorrow. In regards, we did set up basically an incident within the incident around vaccination. So we are, Phyllis Metis is our incident commander, if you will, and we're using the IMT structure for the logistics on the vaccinations to support public health and community health services to, to try and let them focus on actually doing shots versus all of the, the logistics. And so my understanding is that that is correct. We had anticipated getting more doses in, so we made more appointments. And I believe those folks will be contacted for first aid.
And there, but there's no hotline or any way for him to contact to verify this, is there?
We're, we're setting it.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, I'll get back to him and handle it from my end, so no problem. Thank you.
Okay, well, John and Greg, you two, us both are probably really tired of talking about the COVID pandemic right now after about six, pushing seven hours of talking about it. Does anybody else have any questions that you need to have answered now? I think we'll have another whack at this next week. Okay, let's move on our agenda then.
Steve?
Greg?
Just for a brief, one thing that came up, and I think it was, it was discussed briefly, was that I think the, the Public Health Department, Board of Health see this as a living document, so to speak, in that, in that we've felt the need to make these rules. But certainly we are monitoring, and I think that came out of it. But if, if something is going to need to be reexamined and tweaked, you know, or, or other opportunities will come along to try to get a handle on this. I think that was the understanding, we had a bit of a discussion on that, but it wasn't implicit in the order. And so I think it's something we're just going to have to pay attention to and, and get with updates from, from the Public Health Department. Does, does that sound right, John? So people know that, that, you know, we're still examining this. We're not, we're not talking about relaxing anything we've done, but we're talking about looking for opportunities to stop the spread in, in new ways in order to, you know, I'm, I'm still concerned about equity in, and the, the concern that we're picking on a certain part of the population, which, which we, there's no intention. What we're doing is looking at the science and trying to stop the spread of the virus the best, most effective way we can. If, if other opportunities come up, I'm hoping we're going to see those and, and, and work on them.
Yeah, I mean, of, of course, as, as new information, if and when it becomes available, we'll, we'll certainly be, be considering that. I, I think our projection and hope for what actions were taken yesterday is that we will see that decrease and, and be able to, to move into five-star and get our incidence rate at a level where the box it in strategy works again. You know, one of the things I, I did not share, but I, I, I think you all have, have probably seen is that with the incidence rates and number of new cases coming in at the rate that they are right now, we've had to significantly roll back on our case investigation and, and contact trace processes. And what that means is our, our box, you know, corner of our boxes is broken. That's not containment. And that's part of the reason staff was, you know, looking at a, a number, even though it's still fairly high, in that 700 range as, you know, a, a level that we felt the box it in strategy could be effective. But with this much community spread, it's, it's really difficult to stay on top of.
Kelly?
Yeah, thanks, John. I mean, you know, I hope that the, you know, yesterday was like the worst of the days of decision-making, right? Like, it sucks. Greg, I feel for you, and I'm hoping to shoulder the weight with you. You know, I hope that the message that people are taking away from it is, you know, we're just doing too much. Like, we're, we're out too much. Is our activity really essential at this point? Can you ask yourself, do I really need to be doing this that I'm doing? Do I really need to be wading into this sea of COVID, which is in our community everywhere you go right now? Like, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that that was the message that was hammered away yesterday, but I, I hope that that's what is kind of resonating with people. There's still a lot we can do, we're outdoor people, we can take advantage of all the wonderful outdoors available to us. You know, and spend the time with your household, however, you know, how do you define that? Your roommates, your family, you know, it's really tough. This was, this, this year sucks so far. And yesterday was the worst of the year so far. But I hope that that's just the takeaway. And yesterday was the worst of the year so far. Um, but I hope that that's just the takeaways. We gotta ratchet it in. We gotta dial it back down. Like you said, we, we have to make it so that the virus has nowhere to go. It has nobody else to jump to. And the only way to do that is to not see other people and spend time with other people in ways that the disease spreads. So, thanks.
And I, I would say, I think, um, in, in, you know, some additional data, Kelly, in square of what you're saying is, uh, the number of visitor affidavits. We're over 45,000, uh, visitor affidavits that have been submitted.
Wait, wait, did you say 45,000? Forty, forty-five, not, 45,000?
Yes.
And you've seen the news that, uh, the United States is going to be demanding, uh, proof of vaccination before you can fly to the United States. That was a news headline today in the Wall Street Journal. So I think this affidavit thing is catching on.
Except they're saying vaccinations are still questionable because they're so new that they're, that you should be vaccinated, show that and have a negative test. So there's, I think there's still a.
Did I say, yeah, did I say vaccination or test? I meant, I think that, I meant, uh, you had to be tested.
You said vaccination.
No, no, oh, sorry.
Just trying to confuse.
You have to prove, show, yeah, sorry, I'm confusing myself. I'm still tired. We're still, the calls are still coming in, by the way, and emails and texts, you know, it's an ongoing thing, so. Um, okay, thank you. Sorry to prolong it. Thank you, Steve.
So now that we've pushed John over his allotted hour, which I knew we could do. No rest for the wicked, peacock.
Okay.
I thought I had it dateable today.
We don't have a whole lot more, but we do have some more today. Uh, we need to look at, take a final review of the board appointment sheet that there were so many changes on it from last year that John gave us a rough draft that we will be looking at for passing tomorrow. And we just need to double check and make sure that we, everything was recorded correctly on there.
I had one thing. I know Francie and I had both, um, said we were interested in the Intermountain TPR, which is where George and Brian Pettit were always attending. So I didn't know what Francie wanted to do with that. I'm more than happy to, um, either way. So Francie, I'm throwing the ball into your park and letting you make this major decision.
Uh, where is that? At the bottom?
It's on the back page, uh, yeah, four from the bottom, one, two, three, five from the bottom. Intermountain TPR.
Uh, you know, I feel like I have, you know, quite a few things, and you already have the ball rolling. So if you want to keep going with that.
Okay, I'll keep going with Brian Pettit, so I'll get in connection with Brian because, uh, and see what I can do to help Brian out.
Okay. So no correction needed, right?
Good, yeah, and I'm, I think I'm good with everything else. I think the only ones that might have been a little confusing were CCI, but I'll let you guys figure that one out.
So Francie, I just wanted to double check on the CCI. John put you down as alternate for public lands, the Ag Wildlife and Rural Affairs, and, uh, land use and natural resources? Is that the three, you had said three things that we were, you were more interested in?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just.
I'm interested in all of them, but those were the three that we talked about.
Yeah, we're kind of splitting it up a little bit.
And so, um, do they communicate separately, these different areas? Or does CCI usually just communicate all in one piece?
Well, the, on the two days a month during, like in January, February, March, they'll do the legislative committees just back to back to back. And they're always on the same, on different days, uh, but it'd be the same day for, like, the Ag is always the last thing on Friday afternoon, for instance, because a lot of people leave and go home. Or they, uh, they always do them in the same order. Um, and they're, you know approximately what time it would be coming on. If you didn't want to be in on one part of it, uh, you could be in on another part. So for instance, the Health and Human Services is always the first thing on Friday morning when they're doing the legislative committees.
So when this is happening, do we, now that it's Zoom, do you just have one link for the whole two or three days or whatever it is? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and they would be, it's a two-day, two-day period. Later on in the session, they'll just do a half a day update on all the committees. Because it's later in the session, they just give updates on what's happening to the legislation.
So CCI will send out one link to you and me, or to all the commissioners, just to me?
Yeah, yeah.
It's usually to all the commissioners.
Okay.
Yeah, and it says, this is the steering committee agenda, and it links to it, and it'll have the Zoom link on there too. And so you can see the bills that are being discussed.
And do they know who Picking County, who's basically representing Picking County? Or do they just communicate with all the commissioners all the time?
They'll, they'll know that we're, you know, what we're picking here, that they will know that. Sometimes there will be extra meetings, for instance, on a piece of legislation that, uh, Daphne Gerby will be carrying a piece of legis, legislation for the Ag Committee. And anybody who's interested can call in at a certain time and talk about one piece of legislation or one issue that's troubling a lot of counties and try to come up with a solution. And those happen periodically throughout the year. There might not be anything that would be of interest to you or to Picking County, but there might be. You just have to keep, you know, you check your emails and see what's coming down the pike on that.
But they'll send something out. We don't have to be following the legislation ourselves about these areas. They'll let us know. Okay, great, thanks.
You'll get a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I've heard about it. Twenty few things from CCI. I've been getting them for a month.
And we, we all get it. We all get it when the legislative session starts, which is good.
So does anyone else see anything else that is different than what you had thought when we were looking at, divvying this up? Everything looks good to me.
Yep, I think we're ready to pass it tomorrow.
Okay, and if someone runs into a time crunch and you realize you are really overcommitted later on in the year, we could always bring, bring it to the board and we could always shuffle things around and try to find a solution.
Or if something new comes up that we want to appoint somebody to.
Yeah, and sometimes, I mean, Francie's staff people help out a lot too on, like Kara and Michaela both help out, help us out a lot on, on these different legislative issues.
I don't know who they are.
And you'll get to meet them sooner or later. Sometime in the far distant future, you will meet them. Okay, John, I think, I think we're good on that to present this tomorrow for, uh, our regular meeting. Uh, review of future agendas.
Let's just double check on the previous one, Steve. No changes. It sounds like we got it right.
Right.
Okay, okay. Um, give me just a second. I'm, uh, behind here catching up with you guys.
Hey, Steve.
Yeah, Francie.
The meeting starts at noon every Wednesday?
Well, the second, our regular meetings.
I mean, the Wednesdays that it meets?
Yeah, the second, fourth.
I might come for the first.
They always start at noon, yes.
Well, my class starts at, or my training starts at one, so I'll probably come for the first hour.
Is that your new commissioner training?
For a part of the beginning of the meeting. It's nice to have a meeting here and then you're at a meeting in Denver five minutes later.
It's amazing, isn't it? Five seconds later.
Yeah.
We had to drive all the way down there for that commissioner. I mean, I remember my first trip doing that. Kelly got more blizzards, I think. Kelly?
Every time.
My best day, I was at a meeting in Grand Junction and a meeting in Denver and a meeting here. And I didn't have to drive an inch. Okay, John, you ready?
Yeah, and, uh, really, I just want to make sure the board was aware. We are gonna have a virtual community meeting at 6:00 PM on January, uh, this Thursday, uh, the, the 14th. And it's, uh, really to go over the changes that were made at yesterday's Board of Health meeting, um, and, and, um, provide an update, uh, to the community.
At what time?
Six o'clock on Thursday.
It will be at, uh, 6:00 PM on Thursday.
We usually get notice of that too, I think.
Kelly?
Um, do you plan to take public comment?
So at that one, um, what we're intending, because there's no forthcoming decision-making, Kelly, so we are gonna solicit questions ahead of the meeting and put those into categories and make sure they're answered.
Okay, thank you.
We did have over a thousand people on the Board of Health meeting yesterday.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, well, and, you know, as we're heading into future agendas, I guess I would just remind people that they can appear before us, but even though we're not the Board of Health at public comment tomorrow. There's always that opportunity.
Um, then the only other thing I had on future agendas, Francie is to remind you, you've got CCI Commissioner Training tomorrow, but I think you got that covered, so.
Got it.
Patty?
Yeah, John.
Now we'll go to Patty.
I run this part of the meeting. So John, on the 26th of January, we have our airport discussion on your Airport Advisory Board. It's under open discussion. Is that just a preliminary? Because there's, is that enough time for us to get into the meat of the issue or what? I know we want to get it kicked off as soon as possible, so I'm wondering if you might not schedule some actual time for that or just a thought?
Yeah, we can, we should probably take that out of, uh, open discussion. We have, um, a, a recommended structure and bylaws, um, that, that we put together as a starting point for the board, and I think we wanted to get feedback, um, do any amendments and then bring back a final version.
Yeah, then I definitely think we need more time to discuss that. Um, and the only other thing I have is to, and I'm gonna let Charlotte know if she's listening. Um, I will be out of town. I don't know if I'll be able to zoom back in again. It depends on what's happening in California with my mother. Um, I'll be out of town from February 18th. I'll be returning on the 26th. Um, I'm only going for nine days, not 10, by the visitor affidavit, but I'm gonna plan to be COVID tested before and after, uh, my trip. But it's my mother's 96th birthday, and she has specifically asked me to come saying that I'm going to be her party. So I guess I need to be there. And Kelly, I'm gonna ask Kelly to make a cake that I can take with me on the plane. And it has to look just like Georgia's.
So that, Patty, is that right after we do our board retreat?
Yes, because the board retreat is the 16th and 17th, so I'm glad we set those dates. That was perfect.
Okay.
Kelly and I still probably need to get together on that.
The dates are set?
You do, yeah.
The 16th and 17th is our board retreat.
And is that virtual?
We haven't decided, I, we haven't come up with the format just yet.
The 16th or 17th of?
Yeah.
February.
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 Hopefully visiting with, uh, Kelly and Patty on, on how we're gonna, you can go back.
Kelly?
Thanks. Yeah, I have a few things. Um, starting next Tuesday, we would ordinarily have time for exec in the morning. Do we not need that?
I will have to, uh, check with, um, Neely.
Okay. And then you had mentioned that the COVID business grant application will come before us, so we should add that to the agenda for next Tuesday.
Yeah, and I think, do we have a COVID update?
No.
Thought we had that on next week. Oh, we have that every Tuesday. Yeah, we'll get that added.
Okay. Um, and then for the, I'm starting to get more on my toes since Patty's gonna be vice chair. You know, I don't want to disappoint her.
Making her nervous over that.
Looking at, um, the 26th, oh, she brought that up. I agree with her recommendation that we move the airport discussion. The advisory committee is just an agenda item. Um, it always seems a little weird to me to put that under open discussion if we know so far in advance we're gonna talk about it. Um, and I guess I just wonder for clarification, do you guys not expect to have an AIS associated with that? Is that why it's under open discussion?
No, no, we, we've, we've got materials, uh, that we've been working on.
Okay. Um, so yeah, I would recommend moving that out of open discussion and, um.
Francie, AIS is an agenda item summary.
Thank you. The 27th looks fine. The second, I would note, we need to add the Zoom information to go into exec before that, before we go into exec session on that agenda. And then similarly with the airport, if we're gonna have a facilities update under open discussion, is, should we, are we just scheduling time for that or, um, should we pull that out of open discussion since we know we're gonna hear from Jody?
Yeah, it's, it's really up to you. We, we, that's kind of a process that we started to do kind of a quick 15-minute project update, um, so that staff could put something together more, uh, quickly without necessarily formal, um, materials, uh, for, for the work.
Okay, so maybe we just want to note that there's no packet material for that.
Okay.
Okay, and then I think I had one more thing. Oh, I noticed on the 10th, um, we, our, the hearing for the Phillips Lease Agreement Ordinances, second reading, was scheduled for the 10th, but it's not listed, so we have to add that. So when we do the first reading on the 27th, it's set for second reading, um.
On the 10th, but not on the agenda.
Yeah. Hmm, got a few more pages. Let's see if I have anything else. Nope.
And just so, John, so you know Kelly and I, or Kelly's gonna just run, run it by Charlotte to see if there's a better day or time that works for her, for you, Kelly and I, to get together to set agendas. Um, my concern is that Friday afternoons doesn't really give Charlotte much time to flip that around and get everything posted on a Friday afternoon. So maybe there's a better, so Kelly's gonna work on that and then, then we'll let you know.
Sundays have been pretty open.
Okay, I'll see you Monday morning.
All right, that's all I had for future agendas. Thanks.
Okay, any other future agenda items?
There's Greg's cat.
Okay, uh, board open discussion. And we are really close to our agenda.
But before our Board of Health meeting, my cat stepped on the keyboard and deleted the whole Google presentation. And I had to hit undo like 30 times to get it back.
Oh, right, John. You know, it's amazing. Somebody comes to a meeting and says, the cat stepped on my homework. Yeah, we're like, we, we don't believe that. We don't buy it.
The cat stepped on my homework.
Yeah, you have to be careful.
Instead of my dog ate my homework, it's my cat stepped on the keyboard.
Well, real quick, one time my, our cat did take my son's math homework and he shredded it. He like pawed it. And I knew the teacher wasn't gonna believe my son because it's my son, so I put it in a Ziploc bag and sent it to school. The cat really did do this to Trevor's homework. It was so bad, we couldn't even like sock, Scotch tape it together. So you gotta watch those cats.
My cat's not allowed in my room.
Let's see, Kelly?
I do have an open discussion item. I wanted to check in with folks on who may have listened in to the conversation last Friday about the KIP Gannell legislation to change Board of Health composition. And I, I guess, um, I don't know where that's gonna go. Obviously, the legislature's not convening for another month, but, um, you know, I, I wondered what people's takeaways were. I had to jump off before there was really any wrap-up on the conversation, but thought I'd check in.
Did Greg participate?
Sure.
Yeah, Greg and Kelly and I were there.
Both Steve and I spoke, and we, I think we did a pretty good job considering we just tag teamed in spontaneously. Steve kind of described what we'd established and, and, uh, and I kind of elaborated a bit on how the, our Board of Health, uh, was constructed and, and how we operate. Um, and, and I think people were, you know, it was, it was an interesting, um, it was interesting for people to hear it. to hear it, because I think a lot of the other counties sounded interested. I looked in the comments after, and people were saying, "We need to look at what Picken County's doing." So it was gratifying in that regard that we are so public and that we invite public comment and all that for public health decisions. Gives me pause a little bit after reading the history of how the public health was created separately from politics back in the day. There's a wonderful op-ed in the Colorado Sun, I'll send to all of you, I think Francie got it, just about how there's a need for public health to be separate from politics. And so that's what drove this intent for this legislation. And I think that the people who wrote the legislation were a little surprised for the feedback they got, because I think there was unanimous lack of support for this legislation. But we all, and I certainly implored that, I thought it was a really great conversation to have, and we should continue, but we weren't there yet. And there were a lot of counties from around the state that had very good, compelling reasons why it's not a good idea to remove the Picken County, or the county commissioners from Board of Health. And maybe Steve would want to elaborate from there.
Yeah, there were a couple of main issues. One is that in many small counties, they, if they had to get citizens to be on the Board of Health, and they've maybe tried in the past, they can't get anybody to want to do it, they might not have even a doctor in their county to be on the Board of Health. Some of them don't have doctors, they might have nurses there, but, so that's one issue that some of them just would have trouble getting non-commissioners to be on the Board of Health. The main objection was that they felt that the county commissioners are the ones who are fiscally responsible for their Department of Public Health and for any issues, and because they're the elected officials and are fiscally responsible, that they should be the ones making the decisions on the Board of Health. They're used to taking the heat already from the public, they have thicker skins, they are used to these political controversies that can be generated. Therefore, a lot of the counties absolutely just want to keep their three commissioners on the Board of Health. Now, a lot of the counties, some of the counties are in multi-county Boards of Health, where it might be six counties in one Board of Health, and they have one commissioner from each county or the Board of Health in that case. There, so there are different models. Senator Jeanne Nicholson liked the Picken County model, having one commissioner be appointed to it, and having town councils, people from the municipalities also being appointed to it, and having healthcare professionals and citizens on the board. She liked, she seemed to like that model and indicated that they would maybe change the legislation to read something more describing what ours is. So I think that Greg and I made a good impression on her in that respect. CCI, I think, is going to be, come down flat out against it. They're going to want to maintain local control, that the commissioners can be the Board of Health, and they don't want the state telling them otherwise, I think is where CCI is going to come down on the issue.
You know, Steve, the thing I'd love to add is, what we did find, and what we've heard previously, is that there were several counties in the state where the public health directors were fired, or left, or forced out, intimidated, bullied. There were some really horrendous stories that I thought were worth bringing to light on the pressure that's put on public health departments, public health directors, and even boards of health. And it made me want to come back and once, thank our Board of Health and our public health department for the heavy lift they've been doing, because it's very clear, it's not an easy job. I think in our community, we actually have a more public and more opportunities for public conversation, and I think that has probably diffused a lot of the tension that we saw that was, it was down to threats, it was real threatening in some places, in other counties. So I think we're on to something good, but also, I want to apologize to all of our Board of Health members and thank them at the same time, because when I was trying to help recruit people like Jeanne Stebold, I said, "Oh, yeah, it's about, it's about an hour of your time every quarter or so." And I think this has become her life lately, and she's been very useful, as have all the other Board of Health members. This has been a heavy lift and a heavy workload for them, and I just want to acknowledge how valuable they are to us and how much that we appreciate them.
Kelly?
Yeah, I'd love John's input. I think, I'm not sure, John, if you had the chance to listen in on that, but I guess I wonder, on this topic, have we heard, you know, is, are we hearing any, I don't know, I guess, attacks or inappropriate criticism of our Board of Health members or public health staff over the last year? It hasn't come up, but I just want to, you know, acknowledge if it is, or recognize that, given the tensions that are raising in our community, to hope that that doesn't happen here. Because, yeah, well, Greg, the examples we heard were really awful. People's home addresses, phone numbers being posted by elected officials with the express intent of public health staff.
Oh, really?
Being, you know, accosted at their homes, accosted, and run out of town, essentially. So it was awful, yeah.
Yeah, so we've been fortunate that that has, that level of, I think it's called ghosting and such, has not happened in our community. Certainly, there have been a lot of personal or ad hominem attacks by email, or in meetings, or by phone, that a lot of our staff, not just our public health staff, but other staffs supporting the public health effort, have grown concerned about, and has led to some concerns, and certainly stress. But we have not experienced what other counties have reported with direct and credible threats of violence, people showing up at homes, vandalism, those sorts of things. That is not to minimize the stress I know a lot of our public health staff feel. Want to acknowledge, there is a lot of stress in the community about what needs to be done to fight the virus. And so it has not been without its challenges locally, but I don't think we've seen the types of examples that we're hearing about in that meeting.
There were a couple of comments, I remember, from the meeting. One has to do with the Fremont County Director of Public Health resigned in tears. They had wanted to live their lives in Fremont County. She had this great position, she loved it. Her and her family's lives were threatened by the actions they had taken as the Director of Public Health, and she, they just couldn't stay there. They had to leave the community because of that. That was just heartbreaking to her and to me, to me, to be honest. Another commissioner said, he praised their Director of Public Health so much, and he said he would take a bullet before he would let that, their Director of Public Health be harmed by somebody. So there is a lot of passion going on around in different parts of the state right now because of what the public health people are having to do in this pandemic.
So that being said, we don't think this legislation is going to go anywhere, at least not go anywhere this session, so we have to just keep an eye on it if it raises its ugly head again in the future.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know if that's a fair statement, Patty. I think that, you know, the, from what I understand, the sponsors didn't commit to any changes to the legislation. It's just obvious CCI won't support it, but things moved through without CCI support.
CCI won't support, they might still submit the legislation.
But that's huge to get it anywhere without, it's about counties, and you've got CCI unilaterally not supporting it. So we'll keep an eye, and if need be, we'll bring that to the attention of the state legislature, if need be. So, thank you guys for being on that meeting.
Yeah, and meanwhile, you know, give a socially distanced hug to your friendly Board of Health member. I feel hugged, but I'm talking about the other one.
Are you seeking hugs there, Greg?
I brought you cake, I mean, come on.
You could have been here for cake, you know.
Yeah, Kelly brought me cake today, she delivered it, and I'm so grateful, it was fantastic.
Greg, there are also some goodies up in the administrative office that have been there for I don't know how many weeks now. We're slowly working our way through them, the few people who go in.
I visit the office every week or two, whether I need to or not.
Another open discussion item I would like to bring up is the flag flying at half-mast issue, which we discussed some on emails. The White House did issue a flag at half-mast for federal, for federal properties around the country, finally, like four days after the incident in the Capitol. It doesn't apply to non-federal properties. I haven't heard anything from, like, Governor Polis, I think would be an appropriate one for a statewide thing. I think that we could issue a flag at half-mast order for Picken County.
It's already at half-mast. If you look out the window there, it's, we've already done it.
And I think, I mean, it'd be easy for us to do it just on our own property or on county properties, in terms of a general thing across the whole county. I don't know if people just follow the White House order, because it's a federal order, even though it doesn't apply to non-federal properties, but what is your take on it, John?
Generally, we follow the, you know, federal or any gubernatorial directives to fly flags at half-mast. Obviously, I think, Steve, in this case, the timing was not there, and so I think there is a desire amongst the majority of board members to recognize the officer that died in the protests, and, you know, eventually that coincided with the federal order anyway, so the flag was put at half-mast. Right now, if we continue to follow the White House's directive, that would be through January...
13th.
13th, I think, through tomorrow. You know, if board wishes to choose a different period of time, for whatever reason, I think that's well within your capabilities to direct staff.
Steve?
Patty?
Yeah, I don't know if I sent this on to who, or I sent it on. I did contact the mayor of the fallen officer's hometown and asked him to extend Picken County's thoughts and prayers to the family, and that we were going to be flying our flag at half-mast in honor of the fallen officer. And the mayor almost instantly turned around and thanked us, Picken County, for the kind words and for honoring the fallen officer. So I felt it was important that we reach out to the family.
Okay, are there any other items? One thing I can think of, but it might be past a timely thing. Hillary Cooper from San Miguel County was circulating a letter which Greg and I both signed. Did you sign it?
No, I haven't signed it. I had, I wanted to ask you whether you can sign as an individual and it says Commissioner, or if you're going to sign as Commissioner, whether we have to all agree on that. I didn't know that.
No, you could sign, put your name and just say Picken County Commissioner. The way Hillary put it, she just put Picken County after...
But it was just two commissioners, so that's a little...
And if the entire board voted on it, we could, she could put it as the Board of County Commissioners of Picken County.
I didn't get it.
In entirety. So this letter is asking, I don't remember, it's Speaker Pelosi and one other person about...
Kevin McCarthy.
Was it McCarthy?
Kevin McCarthy, yeah. If I could, Steve...
To sanction Representative Boebert was the whole issue. Greg?
Right, Steve, I saw, I saw, when I first saw the letter, it rang a couple of alarm bells, just because it seemed like it could have used a little bit of editing, and I suggested that to Hillary, and I actually took the liberty to share it with an attorney friend, Ken Ransford in the Valley, who was happy to look it over. And then I also sent it to John Ely, because I was concerned, one, you know, just what would the effect of that letter be? And they both had valuable comments, and I shared those back with Hillary, and she has since edited the letter. And so there's a new version, and it's just, I think, more succinct and maybe clearer, and maybe with, you know, a different outcome, a different intent, rather than just condemnation. And I'm sure you'll see it again soon. So I think the rule on that would be to stay tuned, and we'll make sure Patty and Francie and everybody, Kelly, I think, has seen it. But I did share with Hillary that I thought it needed some work, and I offered to help with that. And so the letter's being revised, and I'm not sure where it is, but I'll circle back with her and get it to all of you. And then we could decide if we wanted the Picken County Commissioners to sign on en masse, or if it's just individuals.
Yeah, I'd like to see it. Thanks, Greg.
Yeah, and I mean, the issue is, there's new information every day, really. It's a changing landscape on what information is available, and there are legal, some legal implications that we don't really know very much about at this point that might sway what happens anyhow.
That's right, that's right. I hate to rush it, I realize I have to drive a kid to an appointment, so I'm going to probably have to leave in about five minutes.
I think we'll be done in five minutes, Greg. Are there any further open discussion items?
I have one, very quick one. Kelly, that cake was delicious. It was so good. And the one that you decorated for George, I think he's going to go home and like, and put it in a, you know, airtight container to keep it, is it, I don't know, he'll eat it, if one of my kidding myself.
And I just want to be clear, we weren't standing around here having a party all together. You know, the individually portion servings were taken to far corners of the building and enjoyed with lunch.
We left George here with the whole cake.
And George took his whole cake home.
Thanks for doing that, Kelly, it was beautiful.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the cake.
When's your birthday, Francie?
Delicious.
When's your birthday?
When's my birthday? June 4th.
June 4th, all right, two June birthdays, yeah. I've made everybody's cakes in the past, so if we are all together on June 4th, I will make yours, too.
All righty.
Okay, if there's no other business, I think we are done for the day.
See you guys tomorrow, noon, noontime.
So tomorrow at noon for our regular meeting, and Francie will see you for a short while tomorrow, and then the CCI, it's too bad you can't do that in person. The orientation is really valuable information you learn.
Really nice to be here with live bodies today.
It's great, it's great. So one last thing, this is a major question in determination of seating at this table, even though most of you aren't here, but I am, and I want to make sure I'm in the right seat at all times. So generally, the chair gets front and center, and I would like to be where Francie is, because I like my door over here. And then I've told Steve that he and Greg and Francie can flip coins for the three remaining seats.
We were talking about this earlier, and I would like Jack Hatfield's seat, which was over there, always, that was his perennial seat, was on the left end.
You're more than welcome.
His baseball cap.
And Francie, we maybe buy over by the county manager and county attorney, and Greg, that leaves you in the hot seat next to Kelly, on the other side of...
I think there's a negotiation, I think we're going to have to negotiate this, and this may require a lottery or something. Go out in property right now, so we'll have to talk about this.
It's just going to be random, random selection.
He might be placing a lien on my site.
Yeah. All right, I'll see you guys tomorrow at noontime.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, thanks grassroots, thanks Terry.
Thank you, Terry, and thank you, Amy.
Thanks a lot, take care.
And Amy, thank you for getting over here so quickly this morning. You came bolt through that door. You came bolt through that door.